Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the planning board meeting for June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty. Before we get started, I'm going to read an order. This open meeting of the planning board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, two thousand and twenty, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID nineteen virus, the town of Northborough has been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. All members of the planning board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows the planning board to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda, by tuning into Cat TV government channels, Verizon Channel thirty, or Charter Channel one ninety-two, or by visiting the town's website and going to the Department of Cable Access Television and click What's Playing Live? If you're calling in by your phone, be sure to press star nine to raise your hand. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comments. Right now, I'd like to confirm that the board members on the agenda are remotely present and can be heard. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Anthony Ziden?
Here.
Millie Milton?
Here.
Michelle Gillespie? Michelle, you're on mute?
Here.
Alright, and Amy Peretzky?
Here.
Great, thank you. For members of the staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Kathy Jubert?
Here.
Robert Federico? Fred Litchfield?
Here.
We also have David Dineski joining us from KP Law as a member of our town council. David, are you able to confirm that you can, we can hear you?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, just to cover some ground rules here for, to have, in order to run an effective meeting, I will invite each speaker on the agenda by name to make a presentation and speak to their application. Participants will provide their full name. Enhold until their name is called. We'll be calling presenters shortly. Each speaker will be asked to mute their phone or computer when not speaking and to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate meeting. Those responding will be asked to wait until the floor is yielded to them by the chair. Speakers who wish to respond to the comments of other participants. They're taking. Each vote taken by the board or committee will be conducted by roll call vote. For items of public comment, which we do have this evening, the chair will ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the chair has a list of all public commentators, the chair will call each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. And I do believe I neglected to introduce myself. My name is Carrie Martinak. I'm the chair of the planning board. So, we will get started with that. First, on our agenda, I would like to move to the site plan approval for four hundred Cedar Hill Street. And I'm going to check our attendees here, make sure we pull Brian over, Brian Mazzara. David, am I able to bring him up there?
Listen here.
Hi, Brian. Can you? Are you gonna be presenting as well? Or are you just on phone, on your phone?
No, I'm not presenting. I think just the Dover amendment was the only issue of this meeting.
Great. Okay, so when we last met, we had talked about, we reviewed the site plan and we had talked about getting an opinion from town council to take a look at the Dover amendment and inform us a little bit about what that's all about. And we received a letter today. Did everybody receive a copy of the letter from, I believe David, you had authored that letter?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. Is there anything, would you be able to summarize based on, I think everybody read your opinion, but if there's anything in summary you'd wanna add for that?
The, the main point of the letter, I think, is that there are a couple of prongs, if you will, for first eligibility and then completing the process for qualifying for the exemption. In this instance, the applicant is identifying the educational use element of the Dover amendment. And that would have to be the checkmark or box, if you will, the nonprofit educational corporation and the law such that if education is something which the corporation is allowed to engage in, it meets that first level, if you will. The second step, though, is that the educational activity is to be the primary or dominant purpose, whatever is the educationally significant goal. And so, I gave an example of one case where the man court found, no, that was not the case, the YMCA Metro West. And then Attorney Bobrowski had cited in his letter the Timothy Hill Children's Ranch case, which related to a summer camp that was run by a nonprofit religiously affiliated organization, where the court found that the religious purpose and religious education was closely bound up with the camp offerings. It determined that it was, the property would be used for religious and educational purposes and that the Dover amendment would apply. So, I had offered in my letter that it would be appropriate for the board to inquire regarding the particular activities that are presented here. I believe there was a sample schedule of a month on a week-by-week basis of how the program, if you will, at the New England Football Club facility would be presented. So, those, I think, are just fact questions for the board to take a look at in order for it to be satisfied that indeed there's an educational purpose, which is the goal of the activity as proposed.
Okay, thank you. Are there any, do any further clarification needed on that from any board members? Or staff, for that matter?
Millie Milton? So, I'm just curious, are you saying, for, for David, are you saying we should get a sample of the month of their activities, or was there one included?
There was one included with the letter that Attorney Bobrowski had authored back at the end of two thousand and nineteen. That was in the package that he submitted to Mr. Federico. I, I don't know if the members have all of that material at their disposal. I, I think I had presumed that you did, but perhaps not, that is not the case.
I, I did not get that, so I don't know if anybody else did?
It, it, you, it's probably somewhere in a pile, only because it came, I think, back in March, end of February, March.
Okay.
The, the information from, from their attorney.
Okay. If, if it would be possible, could I take a look at that? Cause I still think that the educational use on this is, seems pretty loose. And I, I'd like to see if I can be convinced otherwise.
Yep, I, I can send that out. Depending on when we get through tonight, Millie, I can, you know, send it out tonight or tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
You said it to me too. I do have the whole booklet that we received on, I have a whole booklet on four hundred Cedar, but I don't see the information about the educational part.
Well, Brian, would you be able to speak to, maybe so that we can get a sense, you know, what that calendar looks like? Do you happen to have that? You know, just to kinda give us a rundown, so maybe we can think about it now?
I don't have her in front of me. I can talk in broad scope in terms of what our activities are, if that helps.
Would that be helpful to the board to hear a little bit more about the activities?
Um, I, I think, I mean, it would be helpful, but I think that I still would like to see really what component of the timing is, is under instruction and education because, I mean, I, it still looks to me like it's, it's a fitness center or a, a, a sports center, so I wanna make sure I can see where that's delineated. The, and, and I'm not sure that, that just having a summary of that would be good, but would be enough.
So Carrie, I have a question for David.
Sure.
Um, my question is, in the, when you started to talk about this, you mentioned that there were two cases, that there was the YMCA case that was out of Metro West YMCA. And then there was this other case of the school which was, had a religious and an education component to it. And that, at that point, they felt like that was definitely qualified. Why was it turned down on the YMCA? Can you shed some discussion about that, or just the reason why that was turned down for the YMCA?
I think that the shortest way to put that is that the court found that while there may be some educational component in teaching children to do certain outdoor activities or even to engage them a little more on a mind level as opposed to a body level, that the inquiry needs to be a little larger, if you will, to see if, as a whole, the purpose for which the property is being used is for an educational purpose, so that it amounts to an educational use. And, and that's an example of the proposition that you do have to look at each particular case on its own facts. Because one might say, at first glance, that these two kinds of operations might be similar, but the particular facts that the court found in Timothy Hill Ranch case were that the religious component of the instruction and the camping experience was an inextricable part of the whole program that was being offered. Whereas the court in the Metro West YMCA case did not see that to be in existence and really found that this is more like a typical physical activity or camp-type activity use.
Okay.
Carrie, if I could share my screen, I do have the sample calendar up on my screen.
Sure, please do. Are you able to do so? Do you have the functionality? Can you see that? Share screen?
I'm not sure how to do that, but I have it on my screen.
Can, oh yeah, just click Share Screen and then whatever, you see that, it's like a green button at the bottom?
Uh, yep, one second. I don't, I don't see that. Uh, let's see.
Carrie, does he need to be made a panelist before he can do that?
He does.
I, I think he is a panelist. He's, David is, are you still on the line, David?
I am, yep.
Okay. Does he know how to panelist right now?
I'm looking right now. Bear with me. I don't see him as a panelist.
Well, Brian, did you just call in with your phone, or are you on your computer?
I'm on my computer. Yeah, we have to, we have to promote him. Here we go.
Now, do you see the special abilities?
Okay, looks like he's just coming in unmuted. There we go. So how, okay, here it is. One second. Yeah, can you all see that?
Oh yeah, thank you.
Perfect.
Alright, so that, for, for those of you, oh, I don't know if I'm on mute. For those of you that, that may have the, the packet, what Brian is showing, it's, it's as exhibit two in the, in the packet. If anyone does have that in front of them.
Okay. Okay, do you wanna talk to this at all, Brian, or?
I'd be happy to.
Sure, thank you.
So, again, a little bit about what we do. We provide training. It's for youth soccer programs, starting with age seven going to age twenty-three. We have two major goals as a club. It's, one is develop kids so they can play at a high level. That typically means at the college level. And secondly, we have a large family antifreeze program where we work with undisturbed communities to provide the opportunity to both play soccer and ultimately play at the college level and get scholarships. So, what you see here is a combination with classroom training and on-field training. And again, we're not renting off a facility out to other, other clubs or other organizations, so it's not like a fitness club. This is strictly used for our club. So, every night, typically players come in, they have a training, about an hour, hour and a half of training. And then there's thirty minutes of classroom work. Classroom work, depending on the age, it could be a college process, it could be high school, it could be middle school. We run a variety of leadership training programs for, for our kids. And these are kids really at a very high level, so most of them do go on and play at the college level. We do run showcases where we bring in, for one example, is we bring in over a hundred preparatory schools from all over New England. Our players come in, they meet with the, the coaches and the staff of the, of the preparatory schools. They watch them play. And every year, we have between thirty and forty kids that then play at their prep schools. We do say the same thing for kids ages sixteen and above at the college level. So, we bring in over a hundred college coaches that are scouting players who meet with those players. They have an educational session where they talk about the process to apply to college at both Division one, Division two, and Division three. We provide software for our senior players where they look for the appropriate school to play at and appropriate school to go to. And it looks at things like financial aid, educational testing, as well as the soccer ability. So, it's really multi-purpose what we're doing with these, these children. It's more than, I think, maybe what's in your mind, which is, you know, kids come, they play, and they leave. That's really not what we're about. These kids spend a significant amount of time with our staff. We also provide training and coaches' education for our staff. So, our staff gets licensed. It goes up to our international A license. We provide that at the facility. So, we'll be training our staff in their trade, which is, you know, how do they work with youth players to develop them to get to the highest level? So, that's, that's a kind of a quick snapshot of what we do. But, but basically, every player who comes in also has classroom time. We do encourage our players to come in and get their homework done. Some of these kids are driving an hour, hour and a half to come to these training sessions. So, we, we do have them sit down and make sure they do their homework, and they do that in the classroom. You know, part of our plan, if you look at the site plan, is we have a large classroom, and that's really dedicated for these activities.
Okay. Any specific questions from board members?
I guess mine would mostly be to Dave Dineski because he's our legal counsel. With what he just heard, would he feel that that is enough to fall under the Dover amendment? Like, I wanted to put my faith in our legal counsel to make that decision because it's such a, the Dover amendment is such a, a big item. I didn't wanna set precedent if, you know, I read different cases too, and some counted, some didn't, so I was hoping to get the answer from him.
Madam Chair, I, I can respond to that?
Sure, please do.
So, what was just presented is not anywhere in, in writing with that level of explanation in the materials that I saw. And in my view, in order for the board to have a level of comfort that what was described is more than just coming in and playing and leaving to sort of paraphrase Mr. Mazzara's description, I think it would be appropriate to have written curriculum or, or similar type materials that explain what's on that schedule because the, the schedule by its nature is just sort of snippet words and doesn't give the level of detail that was just offered. So, I, as I said earlier, each case depends on the particular facts, and I think that what was just described is probably one of the critical elements in making an ultimate determination here. So, first, it'd be a question of, does the program as just described orally exist in a written form and, and what materials are there that demonstrate that and describe the particular experiences that are offered to the participants?
Brian, do you have this in a written form? Is there a curriculum on file or anything like that backing?
Yeah, I mean, for every program we run, there's a curriculum. I just don't wanna overwhelm you with paper. I mean, there's, there's a large document on the college seminar process. There's a large document on health and nutrition. We do a lot of injury prevention. There's a lot of information on that. There's a whole bunch on terms of the college process and leadership training. I mean, if, as you can imagine, we run these programs for forty to forty-five weeks a year. And every session we run has its itinerary and, and agenda with it. So, it might be easier for me to give you a sampling, cause literally I could send you hundreds and hundreds of pages on what is that we're actually providing. I, I just don't know how much detail you want. Like, like you said, I mean, there's probably a thousand pages if I would include everything that we do for our players.
Okay.
I'd be happy to. Maybe the best thing to do is send you some samplings, what we do, you know, and you can see that. But again, you let me know when I send you, I'll, I'll send you whatever you need.
What, timeline-wise, Brian, I know that you're on a short one, so how does this impact, what is, what is your timeline in terms of, um, our, I mean, our next meeting's not till July, so?
Yeah, so, so our due diligence process runs out at the end of June. So, the seller, the property, as of June thirtieth, has the ability to walk away from our purchase and sale. We, we signed a purchase and sale over six months ago. Normally, you have a three-month period to do the due diligence. They extended it to a fourth month. With everything going on COVID nineteen, you agreed to extend it to the end of June. I, I think we're at high risk that the seller will walk away if, if you don't do this by the end of the month.
Okay. Just a, a general, I guess, straw poll in terms of how does the board feel comfort level that this does satisfy, based on the material sent over, based on what town council has said? I, I'd just like to gauge the temperature of the board at this time, if, if you'd like to share, I guess. I'm just going by the order I see you. Michelle, do you have a?
Yeah, so there, there's two questions that we still need David to answer. One of them was, the reason, David, that the board called on your advice was that a member of the community asked that if it was approved under the Dover amendment and then it was sold, does that transfer with the property?
The, the protection is, is not personal to an owner. It's based on the use of the property and whether a particular owner qualifies under the statute being, in this instance, as presented, a nonprofit educational corporation.
Okay, so?
So, if, if other, let's, if, just as an example, if, if presume this is deemed to qualify and another entity were to acquire the property who engaged in the same kind of activity and was also a nonprofit and eligible for the protection, then it, it could continue.
Okay. And then the second question I have is, so we, the town of Northborough has its town meeting in July on the warrant article with their planning board. It's an allowed use now in that district for what this applicant is proposing. If they would wait till July, it would be an allowed use, but I don't think that helps them with the nonprofit status. Is that correct?
If, if the use were allowed, it would be allowed regardless of the status of the entity engaging in the use. In other words, if this kind of a facility is a permitted use under the amendment and the amendment is approved, then any type of entity would be allowed to engage in that use unless I'm overstating the scope of the amendment. But if, if the use is allowed, the type of user wouldn't be required to, that would not be a test, is what I'm saying.
Okay. And then a town meeting, which I believe it's like July eleventh. If it's voted and approved at town meeting on July eleventh and we were to meet a week later, then, I mean, we don't have to wait for the attorney general to approve everything, right? We, it just, it's approved at town meeting.
Any, any action would be subject to the approval, but when a zoning bylaw is passed, it will be deemed to have been in effect from the time of the posting of notice. So, the, the authorization, if you will, that, that the amendment would create would be in existence, but the, the confirmation of that does require waiting for the attorney general so that anyone who relied on the amendment arguably would be proceeding at risk until such time as the attorney general's approval is given. And that's unfortunately just a function of the, the way the timing of the process works.
And just because I know you work with us on town meeting, do you have any guidance to share whether that will be delayed because of the COVID? We usually get a response back fairly quickly.
The, the response period for the spring town meeting season, which although the calendar sort of says otherwise, we are now in, tends to be, I would say, sixty to seventy days, and it really all depends on how the approvals come in. At this point, there haven't been that many town meetings, but by July eleventh, there will have been, I think, a substantial number more. So, you can always request a particular action be accelerated, but that's not anything that can be assured. And, and in fact, the attorney general's office wouldn't be obligated to say, yes, we'll take Packet twenty-one sooner than we'll take Packet two. One point that can be made, if you had that kind of discussion, is to point out whether the amendment in question is simple or complicated. In, in this instance, if you're just changing what is an allowed use, that typically is, is not something that requires that much oversight, if you will, at the attorney general's office.
Thank you.
So, what does that mean for your temperature on this, Michelle?
So, I think the applicant, although, you know, it is an industrial area with a, so I'm not quite sure how many other potential buyers are looking at that property at this point in time. The applicant could request a sixty or ninety-day extension and then have it go through a town meeting, which is pretty much less than a month away. But then again, like David said, I don't know who's representing the applicant, but it's not guaranteed at that town meeting. I mean, there's sixty days for the attorney general to approve it. But, you know, I don't, I'm not sure if they have potential candidates looking at the property where, you know, if, if he doesn't get approval tonight or within the next couple of weeks, he could lose it. I mean, I think we're all supportive of it. I just think it's, we, we know that that use will be approved in less than a month. So, I'm sort of on the fence, and I'd like to hear what everybody else has to say.
Okay. Amy, do you have a, a temperature reading on whether you feel comfortable this satisfies Dover amendment?
It's super hard for me, cause I agree with Michelle, like, if the applicant can get even thirty days, I do think on the eleventh, this will be passed easily because we're going from a no to a yes, industrial, allowing indoor soccer or indoor sports. Like, I love soccer. My daughter played soccer her whole life, and she played club soccer. So, it's not that I don't like it. It's not that I don't want it there. It's, I have a hard time because allowing the Dover use sets a precedent and it opens it up. And this is perfect because it's an industrial, but the next person who comes along could be in residential because a Dover amendment can go anywhere. So, they can say, okay, well, you allowed NEFC, the Dover amendment, I'm now MPS, and I want to, I see this big site in residential, and I also want the Dover amendment. And how do you say yes to one and no to the other? Because I think if it's a Dover- Because I think if it's a Dover amendment, it won't matter if it's residential or industrial. So I guess that's the hard, the hard decision I'm having with this. I really, I like the use. I like the area. I just see it eleven days in Jul- to July, it will be allowed. And that would make me feel more comfortable. I'm just concerned with the Pandora's box that it could open and maybe it won't. But there are so many instances where we've seen it happen. So I don't, I don't know. Actually, I was just hoping, you know, like I said earlier, that legal counsel would come in and say yay or nay, but it's really, we're still on the fence, so.
Anthony, temperature reading?
My temperature? Oh, sorry.
Well, I'm sorry, you're offing me. Did you have something else? No? Okay.
So I, I'm as equally torn. I mean, I, I think it's, it's a good use. I think that it sounds like they have great programs. I like the fact that they're, uh, reaching out to the underserved. Um, and, and the whole thing about this being, it likely it'll go through a town meeting in, in July. Um, you know, and I hate to jeopardize, uh, these guys from, you know, losing the property. Um, but I don't know, does it set a precedence or does it not? I, I think the Dover amendment in itself has a lot of leeway, uh, no matter what. And they, I don't, I think even if we were to approve this, I, I, and if another applicant came along with a legitimate Dover claim and wanted to go into some, I'll say inappropriately zoned area. I don't think this, I don't know, maybe Dave, you can chime in, would this have any, would this set a precedence in terms of, you know, allowing this and then something else came along that wanted to use Dover for, you know, educational and religious reasons in, in an area that wasn't really ideally zoned for it?
Madam Chair?
Yes, thank you.
If, if, if there were another proposed use of the same type as this one, this one having been approved, then that would be a basis for the next proponent to say that if the use is the same and the protection was found, then that next proponent is entitled also to the Dover amendment provision.
Okay.
And, and that's, that's, that, again, sort of reemphasizes the point that the particular facts are important. And that, that was why I had asked about what written materials there are that demonstrate the program and curriculum in more detail than we have. Because on the record now, in the written record, we really only have that one page schedule sheet.
Okay.
It's all due, so I'd like to ask a question of Dave. Dave, in terms of precedent setting, isn't the precedent setting in the whole state of Massachusetts, not necessarily in the town of Norfolk?
Would you like me to respond, Madam Chair?
Yes, that would be interesting. Thank you.
I believe the question was, and I, I think the appropriate question is, would the action of a particular board in a particular town with respect to a particular type and nature of use be viewed, or could it be argued to be a precedent for that same board in the same town on the same type of use proposed by another party? And, and, and that, in my view, uh, the answer is yes.
Okay. All right, Millie, do you, temperature reading from you? I think you originally had asked the question. What's your temperature based on?
Um, yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, I just, yep, I see you now.
Okay. Um, yeah, this sort of brings to some of the points that I had some concerns about is whether or not it could set precedence because it seemed pretty loosely interpreted. Um, the fact that we're under a seemingly a bit of a time constraint makes me a little bit nervous because I don't want to make a decision without doing due diligence on this. Um, and I would definitely like to see more of a, a specific, some specific instructional details. I think that is helpful. Um, I was just curious as to what the reason for having it under the Dover amendment to be exempt was originally in the, in the application? And is there any way to pull that out of this site plan, out of this, um, application? Or does it have to be part and parcel with it?
So Brian, I think that question's for you.
I mean, again, it, it, we, we applied under Dover amendment because there's an allowed use under the Dover amendment. Um, it was really meant to speed this along so we wouldn't have to go through the whole town planning, town meeting process. Uh, I, I am very concerned. I've already got two extensions to our due diligence process and, uh, the buyer's, the seller's very anxious. I mean, i- i- if they were willing to give me more time, I wouldn't feel the anxiety I feel right now. But, you know, we've looked for the right cause for five years. And I know while he was under contract with us, he did have another offer.
So there, the original approved use under the Dover amendment, where, was, how was that presented to you guys? Was that something that, uh, your, your counsel suggested you do or?
Yeah, our counsel suggested, and then he said the normal process is you take it to the building inspector. The building inspector will either approve it or not approve it. Uh, the building inspector approved it probably six months ago. We haven't really heard anything about Dover amendment until now.
Yeah, the only thing is that, my concern is that when, when that happens is I believe that's supposed to be for informational uses only, not for actual decisions, but I, I could be wrong. Um, and I think that that's, I, I'm not sure if that's where things sort of went sideways or a little bit awry on that. Am I, do I, am I misunderstanding what that, what that interpretation is?
I, I think Kathy, did you have your hand up? I can only see certain people at certain times.
Yep, that's, that's okay, Carrie. I just wanted to, um, Millie, this, um, doesn't so, uh, so much address your question, but, but I can in a second for that. But I just wanted to point out to the board, and again, this is just all about process, is that, um, for, if, if the applicant, and again, you know, this is entirely a board's decision, but if the applicant did wait for town meeting, and again, ta- you know, town meeting could say yes, town meeting could say no. Um, you know, give it, given the environment right now, um, somebody could make a motion to, you know, um, pass over several articles, you know, whether it's zoning or other articles because they want, they don't want to be in a crowd, uh, you know, so that, I mean, there's a lot of variables that could happen at town meeting. So even though we all think that this, you know, myself included, that this is a slam dunk at, at, for a zoning amendment. This is probably one of the easiest ones that we've ever, that the board has ever presented. But still, there, there is a risk to that. But then, um, just so that the board knows, um, the applicant would have to, you know, that if that was approved, if the use was approved at town meeting and you, and you, and you wanted the applicant to wait till then, um, they would then have to, you know, refile, um, a new application as a, as a site plan approval. So right now, their site plan is wrapped up in this, in this application that's presently before you. So if, whether, you know, whether you proceed with this or not, but just for a second, if you did, um, you would be approving, you know, the use and the site plan. You know, it's been through, um, design review, um, and so you would be approving, uh, I mean, what would be before you, or what is before you, is the site plan approval along with um, the, the, this use falling under the Dover amendment. So just to, so that everyone knows, including the applicant, um, you know, it, they would be filing, again, I'm sure it would be expedited because you've already seen everything and I doubt that the site plan would change at all, but just to let you know that.
Okay. Um, okay, can I?
And then I think, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, Millie, I think as far as your question and, and maybe Bob will want to jump in. But the, um, I mean, what, what Bob does, um, with those forms is they, you know, they're very clearly a, a zoning interpretation form. Um, and so that's, you know, the, pretty much the first step that people, um, start with is, is, you know, describing to the building inspector what their proposed use is, and then Bob outlines what the process would be.
Mm-hmm. My, I, again, I have some concerns with, you know, it's, it's when their counsel suggested, um, using the Dover amendment to quote unquote, speed the process along. So they did, they didn't have to go through that, through this. And, and that sort of makes me worry that, that they thought that this was going to be just kind of, uh, official, you know, just put right through without really having to explain what's going on.
Bob, do you have anything to add? I, I don't, I couldn't see you. I don't know if you were raising your hand at all.
Um, I'll, I'll chime in here. Um, very back at the beginning, when they came to me with the zoning for the Dover amendment. Uh, at the time, you folks were working on the zoning amendments for the town meeting to make this an allowed use. I told them that. And I, and they know that very much well that, um, any kind of vote at town meeting is at best fifty-fifty and there's no guarantees. And my opinion and my take on it is they, they felt more secure by going through the Dover amendment. So they wrote the letter, they took that approach. I made the interpretation that they were correct. Uh, obviously, it's your option to go to town council for further details. And let it go where it may, you know, I'm a little confused as to why you're so worried about, uh, and a Dover amendment use when you folks were writing the proposal to make an allowed use, use as a, as a by right.
Well, if I can speak, um, it seems that there, that the Dover amendment here is being used as a workaround to a process that's in place.
With all due respect, with all due respect, that's what the Dover amendment is in plain English. It's a workaround so that they can put a religious or educational use anywhere they want and it's federally protected. Okay?
Yeah, but that's, it's, it's open to interpretation on that too.
Well, it, it will have to be fought out in the courts. Um, because if they fail to get what they want through the Dover amendment, they could very easily take the town to court and a judge is going to have to decide on your behalf.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I just want to, I think Amy, I keep seeing your hand. Sorry, I'm trying to see everybody. Amy?
Well, I guess I was listening to, um, Millie and, and Bob. And the thing that makes a difference is where Bob says we were, um, working on an amendment to allow indoor recreation and industrial, that's true. And I think it's a perfect location, but if we set the Dover amendment, it can go anywhere. Like, it can go in residential, it can go in commercial. And so it's setting a precedent, not that it goes in industrial. It could be any sports facility going in any neighborhood or any location. I guess that's my issue. When we were doing the amendments for town meeting, we thought indoor commercial recreation was great for industrial. And, um, I don't want to set a precedent that it's great in every location.
You don't have that choice.
Well, I know, I'm talking about town meeting for, for writing the bylaws. But if we did deny it and it did hold up in court, then it would be also a precedent that it, it, it couldn't go just anywhere. So, I mean, it's not a choice that, it's a choice, you know, if we think it meets the educational, that's a decision we have to make.
Mm-hmm. Um, Brian, if, if, knowing that it's coming up at town meeting, um, and he, listening to Kathy say that you would have to file, but it would, it would most likely be expedited. Um, what do you, how do you feel about that? Do you think that your, um, seller, with knowing that it's a by right use and that you don't really need to go through the permit process? Would that be something that, uh, makes that, you know, wraps it up a little?
No, I'm very concerned. Like I said before, I'm very anxious about this, uh, and I'm very disappointed. And, and I kind of wish that town council and my attorney had had a conversation. I didn't realize we were going down this path. Um, my attorney feels very strongly that this meets the Dover amendment. He had earlier said to have him on the call and it didn't sound like it was necessary. I, I should have done that. It's my fault. Uh, I, I am very worried. It's not somewhere we're trying to short circuit the process. Um, I, I mean, I live in a small town. I know how the town process works in town meetings. There's always uncertainty around that. And, and, and I think there's a high likelihood if this goes to town meeting, we will lose the land.
Okay. Um, David, could I ask you, um, based on what the information that we have now, um, without having the benefit of curriculum? Oh, Fred, did you have something? Fred? I'm sorry. Oh, I thought you had something. Um, David, if, if knowing what we have here, well, you had suggested looking at the calendar, we looked at the calendar, we don't have the curriculum. Do you, would you advise the board that we have enough to make a decision with what we have? Or would, would the advice be that we don't actually have enough information to make a, an informed decision?
I think that that's somewhat a subjective question depending on which, uh, members, uh, approach or eyes are used. Certainly, we have a lot more than we did. And I think that the, uh, recitation of, of the program was helpful. But in any, uh, hearing process such as this, you do want to have a record. And while there's no reason to believe that the documentation that was described doesn't exist, it, it's, it's not in the record right now. We, we have the, the statements. As a matter of law, you could make that decision if you're satisfied with what was described to the board tonight. Uh, and you want to put that in the record because I think what's important is that there be a documentation of those particular elements of this use that are sufficient to qualify it for the Dover amendment, if that's the decision that the board makes. And so, um, again, the details are important.
Okay. Um.
Carrie, could I just say one more thing? I'm sorry, a- a- again, as, as part of the process. Uh, when we first met with the applicant and his attorney, um, one of the things as staff that we, it's not that we offer it, but we, you know, discussed that the zoning board of appeals, that our town, you know, does do use variances. And so we provided them with information that, um, I believe it's either, it, it's definitely two times, there might even have been a third time, that over the course of the past few years, the zoning board has approved a use variance for, uh, uh, I mean, excuse me, for indoor recreational use. Different than this football club, but, um, one was a bouncy house, um, years ago, Teamworks, um, on Otis Street. And, um, um, I believe there was a third one. I just can't think of it right now. Um, so we explained to them that, you know, three for three, the zoning board of appeals had approved a use variance and that that's, that was a, a process that they could also go through. And they explained to us that they didn't want to do the variance process, um, uh, it, because it's risky and also because, again, the Dover amendment exists for this type of use and this type of process. And so that's, that was one of the reasons why they chose to, um, you know, apply for the, for the Dover amendment.
Okay, so, um, just quickly, if there are any, this is a pub, is this a public hearing or a meeting?
No, it's a public meeting.
Oh, okay. Um, if, is there, in the past, we've approved site plans with, um, things that still have to be passed in at some point. Is the documentation that, um, Brian's describing, um, can be documented as part of this file after the fact? Is that legal to include as part of the, does that make a part of the record if, if there's a condition? No, you can't do that.
Well, I think you need, I think you as a board, if, if you want this documentation, you, you then need to make, uh, um, a decision about that documentation as to whether the, or not that documentation satisfies you that this is in fact this nonprofit, uh, educational use. So it's really not just a, sometimes we'll leave a condition open that, you know, per final approval of the fire chief or per final approval of the town engineer. So that's, that's easy enough to obtain in the process because they really can't move forward, you know, with a building permit unless, until they get the, that final approval. But in this particular case, I, I think based on especially Millie's questions, that you want to look at, I mean, you, you're asking for documentation so that you can make a determination about it.
Okay.
Carrie?
Who?
Um. Michelle?
Oh, hi, Miss, sorry, Michelle, yeah.
Okay, so, I, just to recap what I'm hearing. So Amy asked, um, David a question about, um, I'm concerned about, given the criteria that is set forth tonight with the soccer association on education, that would this happen, it, could someone else use this again in a different area of the community? Maybe not as appropriate as we, we always said, we thought that this area of industrial land was appropriate. Can they use this? And he said, yes, because it sets a precedent, given the, the amount of materials that's before us, right? With me, is very limiting, which is the first reason I asked the question, which is why was the Y N C A denied? Which is the first reason I asked the question, which is why was the YMCA denied? So to me, I feel like this almost falls a little bit more into the YMCA than it does the other applicant who was approved, who was religious plus education. So I think in, if the board is gonna move forward, then we need to see that component because right now we're just looking at a schedule. We're not, we, we don't have all the data before us. Um, and again, I still think that if the process works out, he will be approved at town meeting and could move forward. My concern is in the future, given that we're giving just a sample of a schedule, does that qualify enough for education to approve this? And are you approving something that down the line, residents will come back and say, why did you ever approve that? Because now they're trying to do it over here, which is not a suitable location. Using the Dover Amendment in a different location.
Okay.
And I'm not talking about religious plus educational, I'm talking about educational. This is an applicant who's coming forward just educational and showing a sample of what their week looks like.
Okay, so are there any other comments from the board or staff or town council?
I agree with Michelle with what she said. I think it's opening a door, that we need the documentation at least.
Um, any other comments from staff or the board? Okay.
No, I don't.
Okay, I don't see any hands. Alright, so our options at this point are, um, we can, I can call for a motion and we can vote on what we have now. Uh, based on temperature, it doesn't sound like that will pass, but we can, certainly anybody is welcome to make the motion. Um, we can continue to July seventh to get document, to continue on the Dover Amendment path and get the additional documentation and then decide July seventh. Or we can continue to July twenty first after town meeting. Perhaps at that point, w- the applicant would have the opportunity to withdraw this application and apply for a site plan, uh, uh, for, it's, it's by right. The use will be by right.
Or you know what I'm thinking? I'm, I'm just thinking of this now, Carrie, they could, if they wanted to do that July twenty first option, they could amend their existing application. So it would no longer be for Dover Amendment, it would just be straight site plan. So you, you have everything.
Okay, so you don't have to go through everything again?
Yeah, I said, I think we could do that.
Okay, so options, we call for a vote. We continue to July seventh with the Dover, continue on this trail, asking for documentation. Or we continue to the twenty first, and I guess you could do any option at that point. You could stick Dover, with Dover Amendment or um, amend your replication to a by right use. So I guess I'll ask Brian, you know, do you have a preference of those options?
Uh, we'd still like to continue on the Dover Amendment. Um, I would request we would include our attorney. Or maybe have our attorney talk to your town council between now and the next meeting.
Okay, so in that case, um, we would continue, would, we could continue to July seventh? Is that the next meeting?
Yes. Yeah, and you haven't, um, determined, uh, we would need to do that now, obviously, if you're gonna continue. What time you wanna start that evening? I mean, again, we have to keep that timeframe of nine thirty, um, adjournment. So whether, uh, you know, there isn't anything else on the agenda right now for July seventh? As far as, you know, public hearings?
So it's, um, six or six thirty? I don't have a preference. Six, six okay?
I can do anything.
Brian, is that, okay.
Yes.
Brian, what do you have to do?
That's fine.
Okay, so if we wanna continue on with Dover, I think we need to do a couple of things. Um, specify the documentation that we're looking for so that we don't have to run back and forth, like exactly what we want, so that the applicant's clear. And, um, we also need to approve a waiver on one of the reports that the applicant had requested regarding, um, Kathy, do you have the exact report that we need a waiver for, the one with the, um, trees over?
Yep, you, Carrie, if you want, you can keep talking while I look it up.
Okay, okay, so, um, in terms of exact documentation, it sounds like we're looking for what's behind this schedule. Is there a curriculum? Is there, you know, anything that supports, I guess what sits underneath the schedule? Sounds like what we're looking for. Does that sound like everything we are looking for?
Yeah, I would say so.
So the, the waiver, Carrie, is, um, from the planning board, um, rules and regulations which pertain to the site plan. Uh, and this is regarding the nature, location and size of all significant existing natural land features, including but not limited to trees, shrubs or brush masses, specimen trees and all other trees over ten inches in diameter. So that's the waiver that they're requesting, is that they don't have to show that. And they go on to explain that the existing tree line is shown on the plans. Uh, all the trees within the limit of work, um, will be removed and all the trees outside the limit of work will remain. So they, they request that waiver.
Okay, um, is there anyone on the board who does not wish to approve that waiver? Any comments on that waiver?
And just to remind you that you're only gonna have four board members for July seventh.
Yes. Yes.
So you're aware of that?
I forgot.
Well.
I'm just recommending that the board continue to July twenty first.
What do we have on the twenty first, Kathy?
Um. I can't get to my screen. Um, I think right now there's, I, I, I actually don't think you have any. Uh, oh, on the twenty first, the zero Bartlett. So you do, you do have one hearing that you continued.
In the event that it passes at town meeting and for some reason after they say they wanna amend their site application, can, that can be done pretty quickly, correct?
Yes.
So in that case, they'd actually have both options. On the twenty first, they could decide to stick with Dover Amendment, they could amend. But you can switch in flight. You can't come to the meeting and then decide to amend it, or can you?
Well, it's not, um, no, they would, they would have to, you know, submit, um, you know, just what we've had people do in the past is, you know, submit a covered letter explaining what is changing or why they, and, and why they wanna amend their application. So, and then that, you know, needs to be supplied to the town clerk. So, you know, they, they could, they could essentially, I guess, decide that after July eleventh. You know, assuming town meeting, you know, happens July eleventh. Um, I, I understand that, or I believe there's a rain date of July eighteenth. So even if eleventh, the eleventh isn't a go, the eighteenth is a possibility. So that, again, that's still before your meeting on the twenty first.
Okay, so that may, okay, so we won't have all of our, our board isn't present on the seventh. The next possible option is the twenty first. Um, do we have, uh, is there a motion for a waiver on the report? Is there a report number on that? Do we refer to it as something?
For the waiver? Yeah, um, it's section seven, point two, point C nine. And that's in the, the planning board, uh, rules and regulations.
Okay.
And then as far, if you are talking about the twenty first, um, you agreed to, uh, continue zero Barton Street to six o'clock. So you're starting at six o'clock on the twenty first.
Okay, so first, why don't I ask for a motion to, um, let's see, grant the waiver for the requirement to show trees according to planning board rules and regulations, section seven point two dash C, um, point C nine?
I moved.
Again.
Second.
Okay, uh, all in favor, but any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, by roll call. Uh, please say aye. Mich- Michelle Gillespie?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
And Carrie, I'm an aye as well. So the waiver is granted to show all trees over ten inches in diameter. Motion to, oh, Brian, is the twenty first, is the twenty first a doable day for you as well?
Uh, yep, I think it works.
Okay, so is there a motion to continue the hearing for four hundred Cedar Hill to July twenty first at six P M?
I'd make a motion to continue the Cedar Hill four hundred, uh, hearing to July twenty first at six P M.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, um, all in favor, roll call. Michelle?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Carrie is an aye as well.
And then Carrie, just as far as the documentation that you'd like?
Yes. Um, it sounds like so far we're just looking for, um, any sort of docu- the documentation you spoke of rega- regarding, I, I guess more, the more the better, it sounds like. For any of the seminars or just any backup to the schedule that just really shows the primary use as educational. Was there any other documentation that we anticipate requiring? Nope. Okay. It sounds like that is it. And then, um, let's see, if there is anything else, uh, you mentioned you wanna re-bring your council next time as well, so that will be fine. And if anything we need there specific or nothing? Okay. Okay. Great, so we will, we will continue to July twenty first at six P M. Thank you. Okay, oops, so Brian, you can, you're still sharing your screen. There you go. Okay, so I'm gonna change your role back to an attendee, Brian.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay, moving on. We are moving to discussion with town council regarding Newton Street and consideration of scenic road permit requirements for two eighty Newton Street. So that is you. David, I will give you the floor.
Thank you. Uh, I had, uh, sent to Kathy earlier today and I believe she has forwarded to the members essentially a, a, a summary of this situation. And, and for the record, I'll state it briefly, that being that in June of two thousand sixteen, there was a permit issued under the scenic road bylaw with respect to uh, rebuilding a stone wall, uh, on the, uh, two eighty Newton Street property in connection with development of four single-family dwelling driveways. It's Seventh Group LLC, who is the permit holder. That permit had certain conditions, uh, including the, uh, completion of improvements that were shown on a plan from two thousand fourteen that had been created in connection with an A and R application uh, for property on the other side, uh, of Newton Street, uh, with respect to more construction. Uh, as I understand it and as the, uh, summary explained, at the time of the permit approval, there was particularly a discussion between the applicant and a representative of more construction, the owner of the property on the other side of the street, regarding cost sharing, uh, for the roadway improvements. It was represented to the board that there was an agreement and then the board did impose, uh, the conditions, uh, including that the work be done and that there be an as-built plan submitted, uh, to the town engineer. And the work is to be done to the satisfaction of the town engineer. Uh, as a, as an aside, there was paving work that was done to the street, uh, at the end of last summer. There remains, which I think is the main issue here in terms of physical work, a guardrail which was to be constructed. And it's also the case that the applicant's, uh, council, uh, Seventh Group's council understands that there's a requirement for an easement on any areas of roadway improvement that might encroach on the property. I did not see a reference to an easement in the permit decision. It may be that that's shown on the plan and, and, uh, Mr. Litchfield may be able to answer that for us tonight. The, the short, as it was presented to me, is that the, uh, two eighty Newton Street owner is suggesting we either cannot or, or will not, I'm not sure precisely how that would be phrased, provide a guardrail, but we'd be willing to grant an easement for access in the event of any encroachment. Uh, this does seem that, uh, based on what I've heard and what I've seen, uh, that two developers had some kind of understanding. Somehow that went a bit sour and not able to coordinate both with respect to physical activity and the payment of money. And that's why it appears that there's, uh, an impasse at present. So, uh, the, the question essentially, what Seventh Group is asking is, would you be satisfied if we provide, uh, an easement and not the guardrail? And I, I think here, at, at this point, it might be, uh, appropriate, uh, to hear from Mr. Litchfield on that question of where this easement requirement seems to be coming from.
Thanks, David. The, um, the easement, as I look at the plan, there was an easement along Mr. Ramadan's side of the property for, uh, roadway widening, um, in the future. There was no requirement for an easement on the Gustafson, which is the developer's, uh, Mr. Wamboldt's side of the road, if you will, uh, for that portion. So there was no easement that was necessary for that. Um, there is a requirement for four hundred and sixty-two linear feet of guide rail and, uh, some of it is on both sides of the street. Not sure if that, if that answers your question or if, uh, you need more clarification.
That, I think, uh, addresses the easement. It, it, it may be the case that the fact that we had two property owners sort of participating in an application of, of one of the owners because of the obvious interconnectedness, them being, uh, on opposite sides of the same street, uh, that the easement reference, um, wasn't picked up, uh, in the way that the property owners understood. The conditions that are included in the permit decision are relative to a certificate of occupancy. And the, uh, Seventh Group's council seems to be asserting that that owner is unable to get permits to do work. Now, I would anticipate that an owner who's concerned about the condition of occupancy may not want to proceed with a building permit, but the wording of the condition relates to occupancy certificate and not to a building permit. So I, I don't know whether there's any further information on that point. I, I do understand that the, uh, permit holders engineer has made periodic inquiries to various departments in the town about trying to get a relaxation of these conditions. I don't know if there's any further information on the, uh, dichotomy of building permit versus occupancy certificate that anyone is able to offer.
Carrie, if you, if you want, I, I'd like to weigh in a little bit on that building permit versus occupancy permit question that David poses. Um, I'm not sure how many of the board members remember the very precarious position we were put in with Mr. Ramadan, uh, back before the improvements were, uh, the plans were completed. He had a house that was, uh, not to be occupied until the plans were complete. Somehow resident was able to move in there and, uh, persuade the school system to let their child go to school in Northborough because they were pending, uh, occupancy permit was in the works. It dragged on for, for many months and, uh, we were constantly harassed by this, uh, individual looking for her occupancy permit, which the previous, one of the previous in, building inspectors was, uh, willing to hold back in accordance with the original permit that Mr. Ramadan had from a previous permit many years before the two thousand and fourteen permit was issued. I think it goes back even, uh, seven or eight years before that. So although the permit says occupancy permit, I would be in- So although the permit says occupancy permit, I would be inclined to recommend the board not allow building permits until we know that there's an agreement, that work is going to happen, and that we have a, a much better situation than we have today.
Okay, is there a decision that you need from the board, David, or what do you need from the board tonight? To, is this just informing us of the status, or?
Um, it, it was a status, Madam Chair, as well as the communication that I had with Seventh Group's council. They're essentially contesting the terms of the permit, I, I, I think it's, it's late for that, and, and I, I believe I noted in my, uh, summary that they had an argument that because none of the individual openings for a driveway would exceed fifteen feet, that the bylaw wouldn't apply. I, I don't think that's an appropriate reading of the bylaw, I think under one property order, you certainly have to take into account the cumulative number of feet, uh, of wall that would be disturbed, so, uh, in my view, the, the bylaw did apply, an application was made, a decision was rendered. I don't know if the property owner is going to try to pursue this in some more formal legal manner. I think the real question was whether there were any elements of the physical improvements that are part of the permit conditions that the board would be willing to, uh, modify or relax in some way, and, and obviously, that's the board's discretion.
Are there, oh, Amy, go ahead.
Um, I would just go on Fred's recommendation, 'cause this has been dragging on since two thousand and eight, and it, I don't know, it keeps coming back and forth, and, and I think anything we walk away from, then the town's in charge of putting in, right? I don't know, but I guess my, I would put my vote with whatever Fred decides, 'cause I think he knows the most of what's been going on back and forth. And, and so I wouldn't even know what to, what to recommend, I think that would be more up to Fred and Kathy.
Oh, we can't hear Kathy.
Um, the, as, as Fred and I both have, um, you know, spoken with, um, uh, Mr. Dineski, the, uh, they're sort of trying to be a little divide and conquer, um, in that the, uh, developer's attorney, you know, has been contacting me, and the developer's engineer has been contacting Fred. Bob's probably getting involved in, in the mix-up also, um, but, you know, of each trying to, uh, get from each one of us that they, you know, that they don't have to be responsible for everything that was outlined in the scenic road decision. And, and as we've explained to them, you know, then that was the time, um, if they wanted to appeal a condition, um, that that was at that point that they should have done that. The other developer has acted in good faith, has done all of the work that was, um, required of him in order for him to move forward with his lots, which actually, he, he hasn't moved forward with lots, um, they, um, they, they haven't been developed yet, but I think that's, I, 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 actually, we don't know why he hasn't moved forward, but, um, but anyways, he, he is able to move forward, um, and he did carry out everything that was in his scenic road decision, um, but this, this particular applicant has, has not. So we would recommend, or at, at least I, I think I speak for Fred also, that we would recommend, um, you know, that the board needs to stick with their decision, maintain their decision, that that's what the applicant needs to follow through with.
Um, Michelle, I'm curious to hear from you, I know you've been, you've, you've been on the board through probably the whole time, is there any, do you have any thoughts on this? Oh, I can't hear you.
There we go, Amy now?
Yeah.
Um, I actually agree with Kathy, we've been going back and forth with, I'm not quite sure if I've seen the second applicant, but the first applicant, uh, for many years now, and I think we've worked hard on that decision, um, some progress is made with it, and I actually agree with town staff that we should hold to the original decision and have them complete it, as it was written.
Is, is this something that requires a vote? Or just general direction, or?
Madam Chair, I would take it that it's the, unless there are others with a different view, that it's the consensus of the board, that there's no, uh, desire or need to make any modification to the permit conditions at this point, and, uh, it's going to be up to the permit holder to decide whether to make some kind of formal application for a modification, or decide how else it wishes to proceed. I will, uh, communicate that there's, uh, not an inclination to change what was as described, uh, a thought-out process for this particular development.
Uh, yes, it does seem, uh, Millie or Anthony, I, I didn't hear from either of you, but would you, do you feel the same, just so we can?
Yeah, absolutely, so I know this has been, and it, uh, been ongoing for many, many years, and, um, I think the decision was made, and it was agreed to, and, uh, I think it's within right of the town to, uh, stick to this, uh, decision, and that's all.
Okay, and Millie?
Yeah, I, I concur with that.
Okay, so there is a consensus of the board to stick with the original?
I, I don't think I would require anything further, I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention, since, uh, both, uh, I and staff have been getting, uh, the communications from the interested parties, and, and now we have sort of, uh, although they've gotten the same answer, we can give them a little more official answer.
Okay, and it sounds like if they wish, they can submit in some sort of application otherwise, or that what is next for them in this process?
Yes, they could conceivably submit an application to modify the conditions, and, and the board would have to go through the more formal, uh, meeting slash hearing process and consider it. Uh, I don't know that there's any new, uh, evidence, but that would be up to the owner, applicant to decide, and then for, if it's presented, for you to make a determination.
Okay, okay, great, thank you. Any, anything else on that, or that satisfies what you need?
I think that covers the discussion, thank you all.
Okay, great, thank you so much. Okay, so next we have on the agenda, the continued public hearing to consider the proposed zoning amendments for twenty twenty annual town meeting. So.
Okay, so bear with me for a second, Carrie, I just gotta get, um, well, actually, if you, however you wanna proceed with this, I have a PowerPoint, um, it's, it's an abbreviated PowerPoint, because obviously, some of these zoning articles are very lengthy, so the, it's not the full text of every article, but, um, I made it more for if anyone at home was, you know, wanting to follow along, um, and didn't have the handout with them. So, if, if you want me to do the, you know, flip through the PowerPoint, that's fine, if you'd rather just, um, have me go through the, you know, handout that's been available.
Um, I think PowerPoint would be a nice format, just because it's easier for people than to read the packet.
Okay.
Um, should we, is it enough place where we could look at them one by one, in case the board had any comments? And then I also obviously would take public comments.
Yes.
At the end, we can do, okay, so.
Yep, let me just, um, let me get that. Oops, that's not it.
And you're, you're allowed to share your screen?
Yeah. Kathy, can I just?
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, so click on the share screen button at the bottom, just the big green button, and then you should see your, is your PowerPoint open right now?
Um, no.
So.
So the, okay, that's not, um, hang on, folks. David, I know this will, I, I had it open, I thought on my desktop, but, um.
Okay.
Um, wait a minute, let's.
You'll wanna, do you have access to the folder that it's in, that you saved?
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for right now, um.
I can hop on your screen remotely if you need me to.
Yeah, can, can you, because I'm not?
Bear with me, I'm just loading that up right now.
Yeah. All right, sorry, folks.
On your laptop, right?
I even practiced this this afternoon and had it.
Took a good time to get a snack.
Now, David, I'm thinking, it should be the first thing. Oh, here it is.
Got it.
Okay, there it is, David.
All right. So, let's see. So you're gonna, so this is your, okay, so you're gonna go back to your Zoom meeting, and you want to share, let's see. This one here.
Okay, yeah.
Right, and then share, and then you're gonna?
Hit F five, or?
Yep, start your, uh, hit a five and go ahead and do your, there you go.
Okay. Okay, so, are y'all set, Carrie?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so the first, uh, uh, article, which again, um, I think probably after last night's selectman's meeting, uh, the warrant will now get printed, but, um, the first zoning article is Article thirty-eight, and, uh, this particular article, uh, starts off with, um, uh, this is the funeral home, um, article, or that relates to changing the location, uh, in the zoning table where funeral homes can be located. So, uh, presently, um, it's basically the use table, there's no definition or anything that's changing. So currently today, funeral homes are allowed by a special permit in the residential C district, the general residential district. They're allowed by special permit there, and then they are not allowed in Main Street residential. So the proposed change that the board is, um, putting forward is to, um, now prohibit funeral homes in the R C district and the general residential district, and then allow them by a special permit from the zoning board of appeals in the Main Street residential district. And, and so basically, that's Article thirty-eight. Do you want me to go through each article, Carrie?
I wanted to stop and see if, um, are we describing any of our background, like reason for this, which we can do, maybe if, oh, that's not part of your presentation, is it?
That, it's, it wasn't part of my presentation, um, I was just going through, just, I, I had planned on at least for tonight. You know, I think at town meeting, um, we can provide more background, but but I, I didn't have that prepared for tonight, I was just.
I just wanted, that's okay, I just wanted to see if any board member has anything else to add that they wanna say to this one here. And then, so I guess what I'll do is, I'll have Kathy go through them, we'll see if board members have anything to add, and then at the end, we'll open it up for public comment, if anybody has questions, um, after hearing the, the full gamut of bylaw, uh, proposed amendments.
Okay.
For me, I have to say that, uh, I view this as a housekeeping issue for Article thirty-eight, uh, that's all I would add there.
Okay, so Article, uh, thirty-nine, um, pertains to the, uh, definition of what a kennel is, and also, um, the use table as far as where, um, kennels would now be either, uh, prohibited or allowed. So the, um, again, just very briefly, the, uh, definition that the board is proposing, um, is pretty much the state's definition of what a kennel is, and then there was a little, um, finessing by the planning board, and then as far as the, um, location of a kennel, the, uh, there's two different tables in our zoning, there's Table One Part A, which pertains to the residential districts, which, this is the slide that's up now. So currently, in the, in the residential, um, R A, which is the largest, uh, residential zoning district in Northborough, it's an eighty thousand square foot zone. Presently, right now, it's allowed by a special permit, and the proposal is to change that to a, a no, or, um, not allowed. And then in the, um, Table One Part B, which pertains to the commercial and industrial districts, uh, presently today, the, uh, it's not allowed, a kennel is not allowed in the industrial district, and the proposed change is to allow it by right in the industrial district. So the, the, the three, in summary, the three changes that are happening is a, um, a, a much more, um, uh, a much more definitive definition of what a kennel is, uh, the use already exists in our zoning table, but the, so the, the definition is being, um, expanded to match the state's definition, and then the two tables are changing as to where this use is allowed or not allowed.
Does any, does anybody have anything they wanna add to this, in terms of intent behind it, or anything to point out?
No.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, Article forty, um, is the, actually, what we just spent, um, a good part of the evening on, this is about, um, um, uh, commercial, uh, indoor commercial, uh, recreation, and presently, we're not looking at changing the definition, but, um, what the board is proposing, that right now, in the commercial and industrial districts, the use is allowed by special permit, except for in the industrial district where it's a prohibited use, and the proposed change is that it would now be an allowed use in the industrial district. That's it for forty.
Oh, okay, does anybody have anything to say about this one? I will, as you were talking, Kathy, I was thinking about the kennel one again, um, just refreshing my memory through all of this, and, uh, one thing I just wanna point out is, there are obviously a lot of people that have started dog walking businesses, and maybe worried, oh no, uh, now I can't walk dogs. I think our, the, um, definition we came up was really about, um, you know, having them on your, on your site, on premise overnight, or, you know, having a yard full of dogs in a residential neighborhood, not so much that you are a dog, gonna take out dogs around the neighborhood for a walk if you're a dog walker, so, I, I remember thinking that back when we talked about it, um, that that wasn't really the intent, to prevent people from being dog walkers.
Right, and I, and I believe, um, Amy, you can correct me, but I believe that dog walking on premise was, was specifically added into that definition.
Yeah, that was the only thing that was changed.
Yeah.
But it's not, like, around the neighborhood or anything.
You can go around the neighborhood, yeah, you can go wherever you want.
Yeah, you can go wherever you want.
You can, you can't have twenty dog sleepover in, in a residential neighborhood, it's sort of the.
Right. Well, I guess people were getting creative, it, it wasn't considered a daycare or kennel, it was a dog walker. But it, but a, but a kennel, or even a daycare, is just someone who has the dogs on their premises, no matter what they're doing, is what, the way the state definition reads. Unless you're breeding them, or they are own dogs.
Right.
So, I don't know, I just thought it was good to follow the state definition.
Okay, oh, there was something extra, oh, just the table of uses for this one.
Right, I forgot to flip to that, um, I had described it, but I forgot to flip to that slide. So, um, again, basically showing that, um, you know, indoor commercial recreation is presently allowed by special permit in all the business districts, um, but currently, it's not allowed in the industrial district, and that's the, the, the change that you're proposing, is that it would be an allowed use in the industrial district.
Okay. Any additional thoughts on the, any comments from the board? Yep?
Okay. Uh, next article is Article forty-one, and Article forty-one pertains to, uh, light manufacturing, um, in the, uh, industrial, uh, zone, uh, zoning district, uh, in, in town. in the industrial zone, zoning district in, in town. So there are a, a few changes that are being proposed. The first one is in the definition of light manufacturing. And because it's, because of the system that we use, it's, it was a little difficult, the system that we use to add and, and delete at town meeting. So it's just written in italics about, you're, you're proposing to delete the semicolon on the, the sentence that ends with heat vibration or noise. So you're proposing to take out the semicolon and adding a period to end the sentence there, and then to start the new sentence with further, all operations are located entirely within an enclosed building. And that sentence currently exists in the zoning right now, as far as operations are located entirely within. And so the change that's being proposed is to make it its own sentence and add at the beginning, further, comma, all. And then as far as the use table that's being affected, presently right now, light manufacturing is an allowed use in the industrial district. And the planning board is proposing that it be changed to a special permit that would be issued by the planning board. And then we go into other uses that, that aren't necessarily, the, the definition isn't being changed, but in the table it's being changed. Warehouse, right now, is an allowed use in the industrial district, and the planning board is proposing that it be changed to a special permit by the planning board. Same thing with trucking, rail or freight facility, and that that be changed from an allowed use to a special permit by the planning board. And then the use of a contractor's yard, again, the definition is not being changed, but the use of a contractor's yard or lumberyard is presently allowed in the industrial district, and it's being proposed to become a special permit by the planning board. So that's Article 41.
Okay, any comments on this one? Okay, I do want to comment here because I think people may wonder why you would move something from a, by right to a permit. And I think in this case, what we looked at, what the planning board discussed was, there are certain areas of town where industrial abuts residential. But we don't necessarily have, of course we have buffers in between, but the, you know, when you're looking at different types of industrial uses, there are probably certain industrial uses, you don't want to abut really close to your residential neighborhood. And what we talked about is ideally we had, we, we would have like, I think other places have, what is it Kathy, like M1, M2? Is it usually an M for some reason? I don't know why that's in my head.
Well, that, that might be through the building code, but in the.
Oh, maybe the building, okay.
Yeah, in the zoning bylaw, we just have one district, industrial district.
Right, but if we were to have tiers of it, so say if, if industrial abutted a residential neighborhood, you'd want the first band to be, maybe you'd really only want, you know, research, because that seems pretty benign to be close to a neighborhood. And then as you band out further from residential, maybe you'd be more open to different kinds of industrial businesses, depending on distance from residential neighborhoods. So that's a long, that's something that we weren't comfortable, we needed put, I think we need some guidance and expertise there. Maybe even we talked about possible consultant helping walk us through that process, so that, you know, we can make an informed, those, we can be informed about what, you know, what the implications are when we make those kinds of bands. So this, I feel like, was a bit of an interim solution where, in the meantime, while we have industrial and residential so close in certain areas, let's just make sure that we're putting in appropriate things next to the neighborhoods. And the other piece, there's another section of town too that's a little parky, that is our industrial that also has the commercial overlay on it. So we talked about, you know, in that area, th- this is specifically the North Row Crossing area. That's industrial right now with the, it's, is it a business commercial overlay Kathy?
A, a commerce, a major commercial overlay district.
So if we think about the vision of what we want that area of town to be, you know, do we want, it gives us flexibility in that, those areas like that. You know, to kind of control in the interim what goes into the industrial area, and if it's appropriate in that specific area. So I hope that's a helpful shedding light on why you would do something like that. Any other comments on that? Oh, Amy?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just gonna follow up on that, just for people who, who might be confused by it too, it's just that, it's not, a special permit isn't denying it. It is just making sure it's an appropriate location. Like we have three levels, you have prohibited, special permit, and then by right. And if it's by right, there really isn't much, you know, you can do, but with special permit, it gives you a way to make sure it's appropriate for the area. It's kind of what you said, but, just following up.
Okay, great, any other thoughts on this one? Okay.
Okay, then the ex, next article is Article 42. And Article 42 pertains to home occupation, which again is an existing use in, in the North Row bylaw. And a couple different things being proposed here, which I summer, tried to summarize here basically on this particular screen. But this is the gist of what is shown as underlined is a new language that's being proposed. So the definition of home occupation is, is further being expanded to include that the home occupation shall be clearly incidental and secondary to the use of the dwelling as a residence. And then as far as presently in the zoning today, we have conditions that apply to the home occupation. And what's being proposed here is that right now, it reads that that no more than one non-resident would be employed at the home occupation. This is increasing it to two, so that two non-residents would be allowed to be employed. And then the the second condition here presently allows that if somebody wanted to go over 25% of the use of their home, for their home occupation, they could apply to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit. And this is being proposed to be deleted, so that no special permit, people, people would no longer be able to apply for a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. And then the last change for this particular section is being added to state that, that no more than one commercial motor vehicle may be parked in the driveway for the home occupation.
Okay, any, any comments on this one? Millie?
That was no more than two commercial vehicles, right? I think she said one.
I do, I do have it written as one, let me. Oh, okay.
Originally, we had one, but then Michelle brought up, what about a commercial vehicle with the trailer, so we changed it to two.
Okay, I'm glad you caught that, thank you, Millie, because I do, in the handout, and the way that it was advertised in the newspaper, it, it's, it reads correctly, that it says two commercial motor vehicles.
Okay.
But in the draft of the warrant, and I will make that correction tomorrow, it reads one commercial vehicle.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, in the printed warrant, it says one?
Well, it's not printed yet, but it, I, I have a draft that I'm working off of from, this was pre-COVID. When, when we started the, when we started the warrant.
Was, was there such a time, pre-COVID? Like prehistoric.
It seemed so long ago.
Oh, yeah. Any other comments on this one? Thank you for pointing that out, Millie.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Alright.
Okay, and then article, the next article, Article 43 relates to, let me just get there. Relates to the section of the bylaw that talks about duplexes. And in particular, the, so thi- this is, obviously this is the, the section that we're referring to, which is 7-06030J. And when then, so when you get into that section, you get into number five of that section, specifically talks about two family dwelling units. And then from there, you look at the use table, and the use table has this particular footnote under minimum lot frontage and minimum lot width in the residential C District. It, that footnote only pertains to the residential C District. And the footnote today, what, what's being proposed is to delete this footnote. But the footnote today allows for an applicant to request a waiver to reduce the frontage and the width down to 100 feet. As opposed to, in the table, it's 150 feet that's required. So again, it's residential C. An applicant should have 150 feet for frontage and width. The footnote today stands that somebody could apply for a waiver to reduce that frontage and lot width. And the proposed zoning article is to delete the footnote, so that this table would basically just read 150 feet. And the, the footnote would be, you know, deleted.
Okay, any comments on that? Okay.
Alright, Article 44. As you probably all remember, the, we worked with a consultant from the regional, the, the Regional Planning Agency, Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. And a few years ago, we proposed a zoning bylaw for solar. Unfortunately, it was not approved that year. Really the circumstances beyond the planning board. And so we're, the planning board is proposing to bring back a, a new and, and improved. This meets the, all of the current standards today for solar, for, for a, a solar farm. And this is all part of our Green Communities Program, that the, the, the town was recently, a couple of years ago, was, was awarded to become a green community. And as part of that is, is moving forward with a solar bylaw. So a, as you all know, this is pages of text, but in very short summary for tonight, we are essentially proposing to add a solar, I'm sorry, I had temporarily lost my place. We're proposing to add a definition for solar voltaic installation, and then as with any new use, giving it a home. So in this particular instance, again, we're going to Table 1, Part A, which has to do with the residential districts. And what's being proposed is that roof mounted and small scale, ground mounted installations would be allowed by right in the residential districts. And what would be prohibited are the large scale, and, and I'll go into that in a second because we, we've given those a home also. But this table also references the canopy mounted and large scale. So both of those are being proposed, that they would not be allowed in the residential districts, as those are more appropriate for an industrial installation. Commercial and industrial installation. So if we go to the next table, again, we have the same four uses. The roof mounted, the canopy mounted, the gra, a small scale ground mounted, and large scale ground mounted. And in this particular instance, again, roof mounted would be allowed. That the, the canopy mounted, in this particular case, would be allowed in the, all of the business districts and the industrial district. We then get into the ground, the small scale ground mounted, which again, are, are okay in the residential districts. We're proposing that all of those be allowed in the business districts and the industrial district. And then the large scale ground mounted installations, that those would, the, the board considered along, you know, with the assistance of the consultant, that those are not appropriate for the business districts, but that it's definitely an appropriate use for the, excuse me, for the commercial districts. But it's definitely an, an appropriate use in the industrial districts of town. And then there are, you know, assorted changes in the, in the bylaw. There is, again, you know, definitions that are being, that are being added to what, to what each one of these uses, you know, actually means.
Okay, would anybody like to say anything about this one? I will say that Bob had a lot of experience with solar in a, a previous life or job, and it was really, in addition to working with the council, it was really instrumental in helping to craft some of the details that you don't see here, but we thought a lot about things like safety and, you know, not just location, but what do we need for signs or fences or? There are many, many hours that went into this that you're not seeing here, but I feel like a lot of work went into by the consultants, the board, the staff, so. First of all, I really appreciate that, but secondly, Bob, do you have anything you want to add to the solar bylaw, any comments?
Yeah, the last time I reviewed it, it seemed pretty complete. It included all the stuff that I had recommended from my previous building inspector experience in Millbury. They had, they had a variety of ground mount solar installations. You know, clear cutting 20 or 30 acres for panels. They put one very, very close to a wetland and they got around that. They had, one of the installations had to deal with the railroad because it's a direct to butter, the railroad has first options on the land. You know, so, so in Millbury, they, they really ran a gamut of installations. So I was, I was able to bring some of that experience to the language here, and I, I think it's pretty complete.
So we have, just to touch on a couple of those, Carrie. The, the, the majority of the text has to do with the site plan approval process for the large scale ground mounted. And so it got, you know, it talks about everything from security, an operations and maintenance plan, landscaping, dimensional requirements, design standards, environmental standards. So stormwater management plan, so I think is, is, as Bob just said, there's, it's really the, a very full picture of what the, what the town is able to review if, if and when a large, a large scale ground mounted is, is proposed for the town. So that's, you know, it's several pages that are being added to the zoning bylaw, and we'll have that. I mean, I presently have that as a handout, it's on the town's website as all these zoning articles are. And we'll have that as a, as a handout for town meeting as, as visual presentations are going to be impossible, given that it's now proposed to be held in the football field at the high school. So, so we won't have a screen, you know, to be able to, to refer to.
Okay. Anything on anybody? Okay.
Okay, and then the final article is Article 45. And this relates to, or, or what we're calling a hazardous materials bylaw. And in this particular, this is in addition to our zoning bylaw. And what, what we, what we want to stress, particularly at town meeting, that this is not a bylaw that we are encouraging or trying to attract a hazardous materials facility or a solid waste facility. This is a situation where state law supersedes local zoning bylaws, where if, if, if a town doesn't have a home for this type of use, then it could, if they were approved by the state and, and DEP. then it could, if they were approved by the state and DEP, they could essentially locate in any zoning district in Northborough. So this particular bylaw directs that type of use specifically to our industrial district. And, and again, it's not being proposed as a, as an allowed use. It's being proposed as a special permit. And so the, the two definitions, again, this is a, not as lengthy as a solar bylaw, but it's a lengthy bylaw. We worked with, again, the, the planning board and staff worked with the Regional Planning Commission to come up with this particular bylaw. And it's not, again, it's not so much that this is a brand-new bylaw, but we were able to, throughout the existing zoning, insert into specific sections either a definition, the, the table of uses, and also, you know, use our existing zoning as far as setbacks and landscaping and site plan review. So the, this table is, and this will be fixed for town meeting, of course, but just in, somehow in translating this, that I'm just, I'm off one column. So if you look at the, the uses, this is for the commercial districts and the industrial district. You go into, down to the last two uses that are underlined. So those are the definitions that we've added, and this is the placement of where they would be allowed or not allowed. And so hazardous waste facility and solid waste disposal facility, which again have very standard definitions from the state that we are proposing to adopt. These two particular uses would be prohibited in all of the commercial districts. And they would be allowed, again, this table is just, if you can just, you know, visualize moving it over one column. In the industrial district, you are proposing that it would be allowed by a special permit in the, for, for both the hazardous waste facility and the solid waste disposal facility. And then we, elsewhere in the bylaw, as, as, you know, shown in the, in the handout, we made modifications to the environmental performance standards, which are existing in the bylaw, and also to the density and dimensional regulations.
Okay, any comments from the board? Or staff, for that matter? No? Okay. This is obviously another one where, as Kathy mentioned, we worked with the consultants and, you know, had quite, quite a long conversation specifically about those things, like making sure it was understood that it's not something we necessarily want, but need to have something in place for anyway. Okay, so we've gone through all of the articles. This is a public hearing. Does the board have any comments to make in general before I open up to public comments?
Actually, Carrie, can I just make, and I just wanted to point out, or just to remind folks that you did receive an email. I, I'm going to assume that that person is, is in the queue to speak. But I just wanted to publicly reference that, that you did receive an email from resident Scott Rogers.
Yes, I have.
And, okay.
Yep. Okay, anything else? Any other emails to King Man Kathy, or is this it?
No, no, that, that was, the, the one email I did receive, I, I had a phone call from a gentleman who is working on a particular property in town, who had, who is expressing some concerns about the the use being changed to a special permit. And, but I don't have a specific email from him, and I believe that he probably, at least I, I know he was on at the last meeting. I, I don't know, I don't have my participants up, so I don't know if he's on for tonight, too.
Okay. Okay, so why don't, as Kathy mentioned, we, the board did receive some questions from Scott Rogers regarding some of the bylaws here. I think we may have answered some of these questions. And Scott, not to put you on the spot, but I do see you on the line. So I'm gonna switch you over here to allow to talk. If you have any follow-up questions to any, if you feel like there was something you wanted to ask, hold on here. Scott, if you can hear me, and if you'd say your name and address, that'd be great.
Yes, thank you. So this is Scott Rogers at twenty-six Tomahawk Drive.
Okay. Do you have any additional questions regarding the zoning amendments?
Yeah, so what was great, you know, I had sent some questions in by email, and thanks to the board, and Amy in particular, taking the time to answer those in great detail. So thank you for that. And, you know, as folks can see, the, the planning board did a lot of work this year in terms of amending existing bylaws and new ones, as well as doing all the master plan work. So I know you guys were doing double and triple duty on, on some of these things, and a lot of, a lot of hard work. I have questions on just two, follow-up questions on two of the articles. On Article forty-two and the residential uses, I just, a question on what is the new item seven? That is the last line.
Kathy, would you, can we use your presentation as a, do you mind? Article forty-two. The, number seven, what is number seven? So no more than two?
Yeah, exactly. So just a question on that, and, and it may be that the details are in the context from which Section Six is lifted. So I, I just didn't see the whole thing. So a situation where, let's say, a resident is operating their business out of their home, it's probably common for, you know, and I know some landscaping folks or some home renovation folks, that a vehicle would, you know, folks before their shift would meet in the driveway and that sort of thing. So I wasn't sure whether this was a complete exclusion or no motor vehicles, you know, parked overnight. That sort of thing was, it didn't, it wasn't clear on timing or duration or under what conditions that, kind of when folks are just meeting to get ready to work on their project, if this would be prohibited.
Yeah, so that's a good question. In terms of enforcement, Bob, what, i- if this, obviously, the intent of the bylaw, in my view, is really to be, you know, on for a long period of time, not necessarily meeting in the morning to then go to work. What does that look like from your perspective, from an enforcement perspective, Bob?
It, it, it wouldn't be meeting together, everybody to go to work for the day. Excuse me. Generally, it's, you know, overnight or during the day. You know, parking for an extended amount of time. One of the reasons why I believe we went to two is, you know, you've got a, you've got a pickup truck and a trailer, or a trick, pickup truck and trailer and a, like a small tractor, like a bobcat or something. You know, which is a, you know, it's, it's, it's just trying to ease it a little bit. A lot of people already have this situation going on now. But typically, registered vehicles is anything with a plate. So if it's a commercial in nature, when we discussed it, we, we agreed that two was gonna be okay.
But do we need to put any parameters around? So we're just saying that parked on the property, is that something? That's up to interpretation of the zoning enforcement officer to decide if you've been parked there all day versus if you've, you know, stopped in for a short period of time. We don't necessarily have to put a time on that.
No, no, I, I think that's, that's a little too much. You know, it's, it's, every situation is potentially different. But, you know, the parking does have to be on a paved surface. You know, so that's, that's something I'd be, I'd be looking at anyway. But it's, you know, one, one was a little bit too restrictive, given the fact that you've got a lot of people working out of the office. I mean, say, for example, if you've got a, say, a home inspector with a minivan, and you have somebody else, like a home catering business, you know, that's two commercial vehicles right there. You know, and, and that would certainly, you know, fit, you know, the home occupation guidelines. So, so it's not just contractors and landscapers and things like that.
Yep. Okay, thank you for clarifying. Amy, did you have something? I thought I saw you raise your hand.
Um, just a quick thing, and it kind of goes to what Scott said. When people are stopping by for the day in the morning to catch up and then leave, a lot of these zoning bylaws are more for, they have to be written out. So if there's a problem, like say, if it's, say that there may be three cars showing up, and they're not staying for long, it's not that Bob can go out and drive around the neighborhoods and, but if it's a, but it's good to have in the bylaws. So say, it's an offense that's happening every day, and there are twenty cars. It's good to spell it out. But just because it says two doesn't mean that, you know, Bob or anybody goes around driving around saying, you know, I see two cars there. You know, I guess that's what I'm trying to say. It's, it's not that we're trying to be overly restrictive, but you need guidelines and bylaws in place for when there are issues. I don't know if that makes sense.
One of the things, if I might add, is that, you know, I, I, we're, we're literally too busy to go around and police the neighborhood. You know, and one of the things is, when I, when I get a complaint, the first thing I do is I go out and, and take a look at it. And if it's a legitimate complaint, and it is a violation of the zoning bylaws, which I have to research out, then I have some sort of an enforcement tool to say, hey, listen, you've got too many vehicles on the property, you know, or, or, or whatever the infraction is. You know, without that being in the zoning code, I, I basically have nothing to do about it. You know, and I would generally turn it over to the police, and even they have limited powers in terms of what to do.
Does that answer your question, Scott?
Yeah, that's great to know that there's discretion then in terms of the enforcement and a, a level of reasonableness on that. That, that makes sense. Thanks, thanks for that. On Article forty-three, that removal of the footnote, the follow-up question to that is, you know, try to maintain those, those lot frontages and width. But does removing the, the footnote kind of remove the, the board's flexibility on, on granting a waiver? If it, if it, you know, if it makes sense in a particular case, would that, would that not give you all the, the discretion to do something when it makes sense?
Yeah, that's a good question. From my point of view, I think that sometimes a waiver can create a disconnect. So when we put in certain bylaws for specific frontage, you know, if the, it's up to really the residents when they come to town meeting. If the residents want, you know, a, a frontage that's lower, then, then that should be brought forward as the frontage that we use in our bylaw, not kind of tinker with waivers and how do we make that different outside of what, what I think maybe the town, the residents would want to see. So certainly, if, if there's any instance where one fifty, I think the frontage on that is a hundred and fifty, the waiver is bringing it down to one hundred. If residents truly wanted one hundred instead, then that should be brought forward as the actual frontage, not necessarily through the waiver format. There's no, it's not like a special permit or variance with clear criteria in my mind. And especially as we see these cases, it can be looser, or there's, there's no, you know, we try to evaluate things by looking at a criteria, and it's a little looser, the waiver criteria is a little looser. I think if you were on earlier, you saw us vote on a waiver earlier. You know, and it's very loose. There's no real walking through a criteria type thing that I feel like would make us feel more confident in making those types of decisions. Does that help you answer that question?
Yeah, thank you very much. And that's, that's all the questions I had. So, you know, once again, you did a great job in answering all the ones that I posed via email.
Okay, great. Thanks for paying attention. Okay, Henry, I see you have a question. Hold on, let me put you, okay, Henry? Can you hear us?
I can hear you. Could you unhear me?
We can, yep. If you could just state your name and address.
Henry Squillante, seventy-two Crestwood Drive, Northborough, Mass. One of the reasons that I think you took that paragraph out was two years ago, the town meeting voted in a hundred and fifty-foot frontage, and then builders were coming in, trying to get a waiver to go under that hundred and fifty within two months after we voted in the, the hundred and fifty-foot frontage.
Yes, is that a statement or a question?
That was my statement.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Okay, it wasn't a question. It was just, just a feeling of why people were talking about that paragraph that gave the waivers when we just voted in to make it a hundred and fifty feet. I think it was two town meetings ago, maybe it was one. But, and then right after that, builders came in and were trying to get waivers to go to the less than a hundred and fifty feet for duplexes.
Okay. Okay, great, that's great history. Thank you, Henry. Do you have any questions?
No, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see, and I have another, I thought I saw another hand raised here. I apologize, let's see, oh, yeah, I have, it's like Carter Brennan. Carter, can you hear us? Okay, great. If you could just put, state your name and your address.
Hey, I'm Carter Brennan, twenty-two Sherlin Drive. I just, on, I think it was Article forty-one, it just, it seemed like there was a lot of things that were being changed, and was just kind of wondering about how it seemed like it was a lot to put up for one vote, and whether, like, I'm not entirely sure, i- is it possible that, like, if the town at town meeting wanted to approve parts of it and not all of it, is that something that's possible?
So let's see, Kathy, is this is forty-one?
Sure, I, I can answer that, Carrie, if you want.
Yeah.
On, on this particular article, the reason why they were, why the various sections were put together is because they, they do act as one. So it, 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 it does seem, you know, there's, there's one table being affected, and there's one definition being affected, and multiple things, you know, multiple items in that table are, are being touched. But the, the definition in particular that's being changed, light manufacturing, you know, does go hand-in-hand with the light manufacturing use. I mean, I, you know, they're, they're meant to, to go together as a package, but I suppose somebody could separate them, you know, make a motion to separate them out so that they were only voting on each use if, if somebody, you know, saw fit that they, you know, thought one use should be, still to be, remain, you know, as an allowed use, and another use, you know, should be a special permit. I mean, there is a way to break it out, but it would have to be done on the floor of town meeting.
Okay, uh, thank you.
Okay, does that, that answer your question, Carter?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other comments or questions? Just trying to, Carter, okay, nope. All right, I don't see any other hands. Okay, so in going back to approving these, we need an official vote for each one for town meeting. Should we start, we'll just go in order. And do we have to read the entire motion, Kathy, for the record, or?
No, I think if everyone, if you just wanted to go, you know, just say article by article, you know, you don't, you don't have to read it, Carrie. I mean, if somebody does want clarification, I mean, certainly I can provide it. But if every, again, I don't know if people have the, you know, if the board members have the handout. And so you could really just, you know, vote, you know, starting with Article, which is the first article, Article thirty-eight.
Okay, but then read the, how, how much do we have to actually repeat for the motion to be valid?
Well, yeah, I mean, your, your motion could be just that you, that the, the board proposes to, you know, recommend Article thirty-eight.
As presented?
Yes, yeah. Or, or, you know, as written in the, in the handout, you know, dated June ninth, twenty-twenty.
Okay, clarification on home occupation. Does the handout have one or two cards?
The handout has two.
Okay.
Has, has the correct. Has has the correct um number.
Okay, so as um written in the handout, presented on, when was that?
Uh, dated June ninth, twenty twenty.
Okay.
I don't know if it's helpful, if you want me to go through, you know, I mean, I'll, I can just put up each one.
Sure, that'd be great. Thank you for creating this presentation, by the way, it made this much smoother. Um, okay, is there a motion to recommend Article thirty-eight? Do I s- to the annual town meeting twenty twenty warrant? Um, as written in the handout from June ninth, twenty twenty.
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, who did the second on that? Was that you Millie? Oh, Michelle, okay, just for the minutes, I I couldn't see. Okay, I'm gonna do roll call then, uh, there's a motion seconded, any further discussion? Okay, we'll call um Millie.
Aye.
Michelle.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Amy.
Aye.
And Carrie is an aye. Okay. Moving on to Article thirty-nine. Okay, is there a motion to recommend Article thirty-nine? To the annual town meeting warrant twenty, I'm mixing up all these words, I'm sorry. Is the, am I using the correct language Kathy, or recommend of the town warrant? Is there a motion to recommend Article thirty-nine? To the annual town meeting twenty twenty warrant as written in the handout dated June ninth, twenty twenty?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
That was a second from Millie Milton, motions been made and seconded, any further discussion? Okay, we'll call Millie.
Aye.
Michelle.
Aye.
Amy.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Motion passes. Okay, Article forty, is there a motion to recommend Article forty to the annual town meeting twenty twenty warrant? As written in the handout dated June ninth, twenty twenty.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Millie beat you to it, I'm gonna give Millie the second. Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, roll call, Millie.
Aye.
Michelle.
Aye.
Amy.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye, motion carries. Article forty-one. Okay, is there a motion to recommend Article forty-one to the annual town meeting twenty twenty warrant as written? In the handout from June ninth, twenty twenty.
So moved.
There a second? Oh, Anthony got you back, all right, Anthony is the second on that one, all in favor, um. I'm sorry, motions been made and seconded, any further discussion? Okay, uh, all in favor, roll call, Millie.
Aye.
Michelle.
Aye.
Amy.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
And Carrie is an aye, motion carries. Article forty-two. Okay, um, motion to recommend Article forty-two to the annual town meeting twenty twenty warrant. As written in the handout from June ninth, twenty twenty.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, um, motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, roll call, Millie.
Aye.
Michelle.
Aye.
Amy.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye, motion carries. Article forty-three, is there a motion to recommend Article forty-three to the annual town meeting twenty twenty warrant? Um, as written in the handout on June ninth, twenty twenty?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Was that you Michelle on the second?
Yes.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? Okay, uh, roll call, Millie Milton, all in favor, Millie Milton.
Aye.
Michelle.
Aye.
Amy.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye, motion carries. Okay, Article forty-four, is there a motion to recommend Article forty-four to the annual town meeting twenty twenty warrant? As written in the handout from June ninth, twenty twenty?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Really, was that you on the second?
Michelle.
Michelle on the second, okay, motions made and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, roll call, Millie.
Aye.
Michelle.
Aye.
Amy.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye, motion carries. Okay, Article forty-five, is there a motion to recommend Article forty-five to the. Annual town meeting twenty twenty warrant as written in the handout dated June ninth, twenty twenty?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, Anthony has a second, motions made and seconded, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, do a roll call, Millie.
Aye.
Michelle.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Amy.
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye, motion carries.
Carrie, I just wanted to um ask if you, if anyone wanted to change. As far as who's doing presentations and uh making the motions and presentations, so I know there was some question. Last week that, you know, if it was, if the meeting was to be held inside. Some people, uh, you know, weren't comfortable attending, but now that it's outside, if you just, if you wanna change any of that, I just need to get that recorded. For um, for the town moderator.
Yes, um, I think so, do we wanna, well, first of all, at the meeting, I if, I think everybody. Knows now that it's outdoors, they're still working on some final details. Um, who, is there anybody on the board that um does not plan to attend based on that, or I guess you don't. You don't have to necessarily commit now, but if you don't, if you think you may not compet- attend, then just don't offer to present or make the motion, I suppose. Why don't we start, should we go backwards or is that harder to go backwards?
Uh, what, it doesn't matter to to me, but.
All right, well, how about we start at the beginning, for some reason I have it wrapped in my head one way, so like, if I go backwards, it's like doing the alphabet backwards. So why don't we start with um funeral homes, so we need a person to present. First, read the motion and then make the presentation, now Kathy, one thing um we talked about was making sure that we had. Really short presentations, so is this PowerPoint even appropriate to use? If we've added a little bit of intent or what's the right amount we need?
Well, we won't be able to show the PowerPoint.
Oh, right, right.
So, but I mean, if you, you know, what what I did last year, I mean, and and. You know, we we can work on these drafts, um, you know, I can prepare people's presentations. Um, ke- keeping them maybe more to to, you know, bullets. Um, and then um, you know, uh, hand them out to all of you. Um, and if that's, you know, not what you're looking for, we can, you know, revise and amend, but um. You know, uh, certainly willing to do that, you know, for you, if, you know, to to make your, you know, to write up your presentation for you.
And um, would everybody at town meeting receive a copy of that?
Not of your presentation, but would everybody would receive a cop, unless you wanted to, but I mean, normally what we would do. Is um, the handout that that uh, you know, has been distributed and posted. Um, that would just be um modified, because right now it reads as, you know. To interested people come to, you know, participate in the public hearing, so it would be just changed, it would just have a different cover sheet to say. You know, these are the articles that the planning board are presenting, uh, you know, the planning board voted on every article, you know, all five members are in favor. You know, I would just do a little summary that way of, you know, when the hearings were held. What the planning board voted, and then the handout would just be, you know, this is Article thirty-eight, you know, and it would be written out. But if you wanted to put your presentations as part of that, I mean, that, we we could do that. Um, I just, you know, need to have that done well in advance so that we can get it printed.
Okay, any thoughts from the board on the that?
I I have a comment about that, um, so typically at town meeting. Even though they have the warrant articles right before them, often the audience will look towards. The presentation, which is often additional verbiage up on the screen that won't be available. So I do think if it's bullets or footnotes, it's to print it out alongside of this. You know, would be useful to the audience.
So is that something maybe we, I don't want you to have to do, you know, carry the full weight of this, can you do this?
Oh, no, it's it's not a, it's not a problem to do it Carrie, I just, I, you know, we just don't. I don't wanna be doing it, you know, July ninth, you know, so um, even though I I tend to work well under pressure. I, you know, I'll have this prepared, um, you know, for for everybody, what their presentations would be. Um, you know, say the. Uh, the the, at the very beginning of July. Um, and then, you know, people could just take a couple of days to look at them, see if, you know, how, whatever changes you wanna make. And then, you know, we'll just, we'll finalize it like a week in advance, so that I can get it to the printer.
Okay. All right, so in terms of um presentations, maybe maybe the best way to start is there. Anyone who wants to specifically present something, so we can get that out of the way, is there anything that you? Would like to present?
I'm happy with presenting the solar bylaw.
Okay, so that's Article forty-four.
Uh, Madam Chair, would it make sense just for, to speed things along for. Um, kind of to clump in, you know, three or four. Um, bylaws to be read by one person and then do kind of a round robin, just to keep it fluid instead of like. Changing somebody out every time.
Oh, that's a great idea. Okay, so Michelle, do you wanna do hazardous waste as well, the biggest of the bunch? Could the same person, could the same person also do the motions, is there any reason why two different?
No, it could be the same person.
Okay, so maybe that's a good thought then, so. Do we wanna, is there anybody who does not wanna present, period? No, okay. So let's see, uh, Michelle, you don't necessarily have to do those both, those are big ones. Um, but if you are gonna, actually, maybe you should, because those will be the last two, and then you'll be grouped into that. Do you mind doing that, even though they're the big ones? The hazardous, solar and hazardous? Hazardous?
I'll do those, yeah, I can talk to those.
Yep. Okay, um, let's see. Any, well, if we go back, so I can't see, if we just go back here on the. I wouldn't mind actually doing the industrial.
I I don't think I would mind doing uh funeral or kennel or.
Are funeral and kennels the first two?
Yeah.
Okay, so Millie, funeral and kennel.
Right, you want me to do the indoor commercial and then the home occupation?
Are those the next two?
Well, I think, well, I don't know, I don't have the order.
Uh, indoor and then in.
And then the industrials in the middle, I think.
Yeah, industrials in the middle.
So Article um forty is the outdoor, uh, I mean, excuse me, is the um, yeah, is the recreational?
So maybe Carrie, maybe you wanna do the recreational and the industrial.
Well, I don't have to do two, it's okay.
Well, just for flow, and then I'll do home occupation and Anthony can do duplexes.
What is um, what is forty-two?
Forty-two is the home occupation.
Okay, so that's Amy, and what's forty-three?
Forty-three is the duplex.
Anthony, do you wanna do that or no?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, um, what, and forty-one is industrial?
Yeah, forty, yeah, forty-one is um the changes to the industrial.
Okay, and forty is?
The, uh, uh, yeah, the recreational uh facility and industrial.
Okay, so then um, what I have here is Millie's will do thirty and thirty-nine. That's funeral and kennels.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I will do forty and forty-one, that's recreation and industrial. Amy will do forty-two, that's home occupation. Anthony will do forty-three, that's the waiver. Michelle will do forty-four and forty-five, that's solar and hazardous. Good.
Okay, and then if you wanna um ju- just close out the hearing, Carrie?
Okay, um, if that's all you need for for purposes Kathy?
Yes, yep, thank you.
Is there a motion to close the hearing for the. Proposed, uh, is there a motion to close the hearing to consider the proposed zoning amendments for the twenty twenty annual town meeting?
Moved.
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Millie seconded?
Yep.
Great, all in favor, roll call, Millie.
Aye.
Michelle.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Amy.
Aye.
And Carrie is an aye, the hearing is closed, thank you for everybody's participation and lengthy involvement in these bylaws. Okay, let's see, next we have the public hearing for two twenty-two West Main Street. Common driveway, and I have a public um hearing notice to read. Let me make sure I read the right one. Uh, the public hearing notice states, in accordance with section seven dash ten dash zero two zero of the zoning bylaw. Section ten dash thirty-six dash one three zero of the subdivision rules and regulations. The North Row Planning Board will hold a public hearing on June sixteenth, twenty twenty. At six P M. to consider the common driveway special permit application of Abu Construction Incorporated. To construct a common driveway serving two lots, Lot one A and Lot two A. On the property located at two twenty-two West Main Street, map seventy-five parcel one seventy. Plans were prepared by Cornerstone Engineering and are on file at the town clerk's office and town planner's office and may be viewed on the planning department webpage. Um, additionally listed here is the information that I read at the beginning of the meeting regarding the governor's. Um, March twelve, twenty twenty order suspending provisions of the open meeting law. And also giving instructions on how to participate in the public hearing via several different options, including Zoom. And also calling in by phone, uh, just a reminder to anyone calling in by phone that you must dial star nine. Um, to raise your hand and be recognized. Okay, with that, I need to bring in the attendees for this hearing. Okay, and I have. Mike Sullivan. Um, I don't see a Vito Colonna, doesn't look like it.
Vito, um, I just added Vito, sometimes he'll do the presentation, sometimes Mike, but I think it's Mike on this one.
Okay, all right, Tony Abu, I don't see, and Kathy Abu. I don't see, if you are here, no, everyone's here by name, so I don't think that they're here, so I am going to. Come back into the panelist mode and welcome Mike Sullivan. Can you hear us okay, Mike? Uh, we can't hear you, so let's.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, yes, we can, thank you.
Okay, good. Are you ready for me or?
You're ready, yes, do you need to share anything, do you have the, do you see the ability to share your screen or?
Kathy, do you have a plan to put up?
Um, I do not.
Can you um, let me see if I have it downloaded, I thought it was, okay. Um, could you let me see if I could uh, share my screen with you?
Yes, you may share your screen, do you see how to do that, at the bottom, is there a green share screen?
I'm on an iPad, so it's at the top, let me see. Let me see if I uh. I hope I downloaded it on this, I think.
All right, um, Mike, if you can't, if you can't find. All right, um, Mike, if you can't, if you can't find...
Okay, there we go.
Oh, okay.
Can you see it?
Yes.
Good. All right, uh, everybody's, uh, familiar with the site, uh, at the corner of Route twenty. Uh, again, Mike, for the record, Mike Sullivan, Cornerstone Engineering, uh, representing Tony Aboo. Uh, the project is a five lot project, two of the buildings are up, uh, the one on the corner and, uh, the one on Lincoln Street. Uh, the one on Lincoln Street is sold, the one on the corner is on the market. There's another lot, a third lot on Lincoln Street that they haven't constructed yet, and the two we're going to discuss tonight, uh, the two on Route twenty. They're thirty-seven and thirty-eight thousand square foot lots. Uh, the purpose that we're here is for a special permit, uh, to get approval on the common driveway, uh, seemed very appropriate, realizing we're trying to minimize, uh, any disturbance on Route twenty. Uh, and what I've used, uh, for presentation tonight is under section ten thirty-six one thirty, uh, there are seven standards that need to be evaluated, uh, prior to approving this. Uh, the first one is, is minimum width, which is eighteen feet with a twenty-four foot easement. We're proposing twenty foot of pavement, uh, per the fire chief's request, and the easement's thirty-two feet wide, so we satisfy that. Maximum grade is ten percent, uh, and the first fifty feet can't be any more than six percent. What we're proposing is, uh, six percent for the first fifty and then transitioning to an eight percent slope. Uh, the distance from a right of way, uh, the minimum is sixty-five feet, the closest right of way to, to our common driveway is on, uh, Crestwood Drive, and that's three hundred and fifty feet away. Uh, center line radius is sixty feet, which is what we have proposed on the site plan. Minimum syst- uh, site distance is two hundred feet. Uh, we have a thousand feet looking to the west and four hundred and fifty feet looking to the east. Uh, the easement for the driveway has to be fifteen feet off the property line, which we have. And the final number, uh, seven, is the house numbers have to be, uh, located in a certain manner and would certainly satisfy that. For the drainage, uh, we've evaluated the pre and post, and as you can see, let me see if I can draw on here. Uh, let me see. Right in here is the drainage system, uh, that's considered, that'd be a series of cul texts, uh, in Fred's letter, which we'll talk about later, uh, we had to change the grades on that driveway, so everything was pitched to that, uh, catch basin that would discharge to the cul texts. Uh, that has been done, uh, so that there be no discharge onto Route twenty. Uh, this, uh, system that has been designed will accommodate a hundred year storm for both, uh, rate and volume control. The sewer and water line, again, to minimize the, uh, impacts on Route twenty and the construction in Route twenty, we're proposing the sewer and water to run through an easement out the back of the house, and that would connect into, uh, the mains on Lincoln Street. Uh, curb cut, we needed approval from the state, uh, that has been done, uh, we've submitted to them, and they have approved the, uh, the curb cut. The fire chief, as I had mentioned, wanted a twenty foot, uh, wide driveway, we had revised our initial plans to accommodate that, and in January, he submitted a letter of approval as far as that goes. Uh, Fred, I had mentioned, sent a letter, uh, I could either go through it or just indicate that we have no problem with anything in it. I've talked to Tony about, uh, the issues that, uh, would impact his construction process, and he has no objections to anything that is, uh, being proposed, so I'll defer to, uh, you, Madam Chairman, if you'd like me to go through them, or just touch on some of the ones that we're going to have to revise the plans for, I'd be happy to approach it any way you want.
Um, sure, do you want to talk through maybe the revisions, and then Fred can fill in any gaps that he thinks is, that we should know?
Certainly. Does everybody have the letter from Fred in front of them, just so I can reference numbers?
I do not, but I...
Okay. Um, the fir- the first one is, uh, what I had already mentioned, uh, grade the driveway so it's, uh, all the, all the sheet flow is directed towards the basin, uh, we have done that, and we'll be resubmitting that plan. Uh, the impervious cover calculation sheet, we took into account the existing impervious, which was minimal, uh, we have to revise that sheet. Fred, we've, uh, we looked at that today, uh, the, the system can still accommodate it, but we will have to revise that sheet two A, uh, to reflect that revision, but the drainage will not have to be, uh, revised. Fred has recommended, under number five, he has recommended that dry wells be connected, uh, from the individual houses, uh, I talked with Tony about that, he has no problem with it. Uh, the hood in the catch basin needs to be extended down further by twelve inches, and we have no problem with that as well, and the rest of it is, uh, uh, pretty self-explanatory that will not require any revisions, as-built plan, um, signature of the planning board, declarations of covenants, all that will certainly be done, so we would hope that that would be put in the, uh, conditions, uh, if the board decides this is an appropriate, uh, presentation. With that, Madam Chairman, I'll turn it back to the board.
Okay, Fred, do you have anything to add?
Um, the only thing I wanted to talk about with Mike was the, um, the number four. The plan says that, uh, the site distance is four hundred and fifty feet, I think, going back towards the center of town, but it also says there's some grading, uh, in front of Lot one A, and I wanted to make sure it was clear that when the as-built plan is done, that four hundred and fifty feet are, needs to be confirmed on the as-built plan, so...
No problem.
We all agree that it's cut back appropriately.
No problem.
Okay. Everything else, uh, is pretty standard, uh, the plan meets the regulations, I, those comments that I had, I just think will make it a little bit better.
Okay, um, any, any comments from the board or questions? Oh, I'm sorry, um, yes, Amy.
Um, I just had a ca- uh, question for Fred, um, did this go before groundwater?
Uh, no, it did not.
Okay, was this one that was supposed to go through groundwater, I just see, because there were, um, impervious calculations and everything?
No, um, uh, they're allowed by right, provided that they, um, don't exceed the fifteen percent impervious cover.
Okay, and you did, you checked all the calculations, I'm sure.
I did.
Yep. Okay, I guess one other question I had with number ten, where it says the applicant shall submit a final plan for signature by the planning board, is that a different A and R, is that what that's talking about?
Uh, yes, um, in the regulations, it calls for, uh, when you grant a, a common driveway, when, the A and R plan just creates the two lots, or in this case, it was five lots. But when you get a common driveway special permit, they need to show on those A and R lots where the actual easement is and how it's defined, and that plan also gets recorded. Sometimes they do the A and R and the easement plan in one, and sometimes they do it in, in various steps, and I believe this one, the A and R plan was already recorded, but now there'll be another plan showing the easement, and then, uh, who has rights to what, that also calls for, um, declaration of covenants, so that the homeowners are clear as to who has responsibility for which, uh, maintenance on the driveway.
Okay, and that's something that, that you will, um, write out, like, who has the easement for what, or that's something you go over with the applicant to decide, or it's just on the plan you can tell, and it will have to be documented?
The, the plan is just going to show the easements, um, the easement plans don't have to come back to the planning board, as, as long as they're not creating any new property lines, they can just be, uh, submitted to the registry of deeds as what I believe they call an eighty-one X plan, um, because it's not creating any new lots, they can just add an easement and then make sure that that easement is properly referenced in the deed to each lot. The declaration of covenants is something that the attorney for the applicant will prepare, and then we will review to make sure that it covers all the appropriate maintenance, so that there's no confusion later on, that the town might be responsible for plowing or repaving that driveway. It needs to be clear that all the expenses associated with the driveway are private and the responsibility of those two homeowners in lots one A and two A.
Okay, thanks, I guess I, I've seen a couple of different A and Rs, so I just wanted to make sure, these will probably be the finals. Okay, I guess those were my only questions.
Yeah, so I do, and this is somewhat directed towards, uh, Kathy, but given the, the, this as far as I'm aware, there's still pending litigation with this site, and I'm curious as, or I'm concerned about, um, you know, granting any permits or special permits at this time, or, or could we get even, uh, town council's input, should there be any impact on doing so at this time, before that's settled?
The, the, the two, uh, really don't have anything to do with each other, because this is just strictly a common driveway, um, and in our common driveway regulations, it, um, it's not required, um, as to where the common driveway is going to, it could be going to commercial properties, could be going to residential properties, single family duplexes, um, could be going to an industrial property, so we allow common driveways for, you know, without stating who is, who is the ultimate end user of the common driveway. So this, it, the, the common driveway won't change whether this is, um, the common portion of the driveway won't change, whether this is two single family houses, two duplexes, one duplex, one single family, um, you know, the, the individual driveways for the properties will change, but that's not anything that the board has, um, jurisdiction over, so it's just the common portion. And it's, it's very similar to, um, uh, what's, um, the, the situation with four twenty-five, Whitney Street, where there is a pending appeal, but, um, there is a part of the law whi- which applies here too, that, you know, those appeals are, are their own, sort of their own animal, and, um, you know, go the path through the court system, and, and the board continues on with the, you know, with, with applications that are before them. So the, it doesn't, it doesn't matter what, again, who is the end user, whether it's a single family, a duplex, some combination thereof, it's, it's the common portion of the driveway that meets your regulations, and that's, that's what's before you.
Um, so what is the, I have a question about that, um, bump out, so there's like the extra, um, driveway to nowhere at the, do you see that, Mike? I, I know you can't see where my mouth is.
I think, at the, at the end, right, right in here? Let me see, right here?
Yes.
Yeah, that, that's, uh, what the fire chief wants, uh, to turn around, uh, vehicles, so that, that's, so he'll, so it's kind of like a Y turnaround for emergency vehicles.
So if a duplex were put there, that obviously makes four lanes into this, where does that bump out go?
Well, that, that bump out is not part of the common driveway, the common driveway ends at the property line.
But if the fire chief wanted a bump out like that, I guess, I'm thinking, if, if for some reason this does go to duplex, where does the bump out go?
Well, that's, again, what, what we have before you are two single family houses, uh, we haven't got into that detail on the duplexes. Obviously, we're, we're going to have to, um, satisfy the fire chief in terms of how we do that turnaround, uh, and we'd have to work with him on that.
Okay, so then, I'm not comfortable either, I, I mean, I guess I have some questions that I'm afraid to ask in a public setting based on pending litigation, so I don't feel comfortable, um, asking without being advised by council on what I can ask or can't ask. So, you know...
I mean, the altern- the, the, the alternative is to do two singles, it just, from a planning standpoint, it made no sense to do the two singles. Uh, if the board doesn't want the common driveway, then we can do two singles by right, and, and I don't think that's a good idea, uh, but i- if that's what we have to do, that's what we have to do.
Yeah, I'm not necessarily, you know, giving a just... I, I'm not comfortable with that question, yes.
I'm just curious, Mike, um, was Mass Highway suggesting you should do one driveway?
Oh, Mass Highway was, they, they definitely, they want to minimize the amount of curb cuts, uh, and they were very much in favor of what's being proposed.
Would they agree to...
I mean, just from a safety standpoint, it makes no sense not to do it.
Right, but, um, would they agree to two driveways, or are you saying they're not agreeing to two?
I don't know, if, if, if the, if we have no option, uh, they're not going to say you can't build on the lot, if the planning board denies a common driveway, then we go back to two driveways and we'll deal with, uh, DOT.
Um, any other comments from the board? Or questions? Any comments from, we heard from Fred, any other comments?
Um, well, I would confirm what Mike said about Mass DOT, I did speak to the permits engineer, and he was wholeheartedly in favor of one curb cut on these two lots, um, as far from that intersection as possible, so they did accommodate that. I'm not sure, if in fact the applicant won his appeal and he was granted two duplexes, would he still have to come back for site plan approval on the duplexes, um, and then the board would have, um, the ability to review the common driveway at that point?
See, I don't know, and I don't, I don't want to ask too many questions, I'm not supposed to, so that's what makes me a little nervous about this. Um, I'm, I'm going to ask if there are any, um, comments from the, it is a public hearing, do any, is there anyone here to speak to this hearing? Just raise your hand. Okay, I didn't see anybody there. Um, let's see, so, I, I mean, how does the rest of the board feel about comfort level? Is this something that we would want to continue to, do we have a chance to just sort of get a, a real sense, uh, from a legal standpoint, what, what's, what our rights are, or what this, what's, what's, I don't know, I guess we haven't heard much at all about, um, pending litigation, so I hesitate to, to dig in.
I, I've heard nothing, so I can't help you on that end.
No, I understand that.
I mean, from, from my, from my, from my pers- from my perspective, it, it just seemed, you know, I, I understand what you're saying, that, that, that there's litigation, and when there's litigation, people become concerned. What's before the board today is two single family houses with a common driveway, uh, I don't see how the two tie in together, there's specific requirements for the common driveway, I think we've satisfied those requirements, and I don't know that the litigation should negate, what I look at is a whole separate issue.
So, Mike?
Yes.
So it's almost what Kathy just said, which was, the common driveway is a common driveway with regardless of what is on the other side, whether it's two single families, um, commercial, industrial, whatever. I think what's in question here is, the whole thing changes once all of a sudden you change the scale of the building, or the, or that the, the driveway is going to the buildings because of this additional bump out that the fire chief is requesting because of a turnaround radius. So just saying, if, for example, the one that's closest to the single families become two duplexes, that's going to be very hard for you to get driveways to that, that duplex without getting a bump out, it, it's so close to the property line, or at least what it's looking here, so that's why I think, um, the, the board, if I'm, I'm wrong, it looks like they're questioning that.
Well, i- if you, if I may, Michelle, under those circumstances, just looking at it, it looks like the turnaround would be towards Route twenty, uh, so instead of the bump out being parallel with, uh, Route twenty, it'd be perpendicular, so you'd have two driveways going in, and then another, a, a third, let me just draw on here. Kind of heading in this direction here, uh, you'd have a bump.
Can you do that without hitting? Can you do that? Can you do that with that hill? I mean, that's a huge hill there.
Well, the hill doesn't start, the hill doesn't start till here. That's the start of the hill.
Okay.
That and that close to the sidewalk? I don't think that's looks pretty close to this. That hill doesn't start till the sidewalk?
Yeah, if you look at, let me get my pen scratching off of here.
Carrie, if I could, while while Mike's doing that, if you if the board wanted to, again, it's a special permit, so you place conditions if you so choose and, you know, one of your conditions could be that this is a a common driveway for two single family houses. As referenced, you know, on this plan, you know, lots one A, lot lot two A. And right in your decision, you state that it's for two single family homes.
Right, I just don't want to make any decisions. Me personally, my opinion is I don't want to make conditions and decisions that then impact ending litigation that I should have known ahead of time but didn't know because I haven't had the benefit of advisement of council. So I don't want to forego that advisement, make up my own rules and then find out that we've, you know, done something wrong. That's my primary concern. I don't know if anyone on the board, if I'm the only one, or it sounds like Anthony is a concern of yours, any other concerns or, I mean, I'm I'm not the only vote, so I want to make sure that I'm not I'm not.
Hi, Carrie, I I'd like to just chime in one more time. I believe that, and Bob might be able to speak to it a little bit more, that the fire department has to sign off before the building permits can be issued. And if the lots were to change to duplexes, they would still be required to have that turnaround sufficient for the fire department to get in and out. And I believe the building permits wouldn't be issued without the fire department signing off, but perhaps Bob could weigh in a little more. He works with that process more than I.
Just a question, the square footage, the current proposed houses. We, what's the the square footage is?
Well, the box is is what? Sixty-five by forty-eight. So seventy, you know, with with the garage. So they're, you know, they'll probably be three thousand square foot, single family houses. Just for clarification, Carrie, that line that I drew is the top of the slope. And actually, the the slope that you see driving by on twenty, that's essentially entirely off property. That's within the right of way, the street right away. It's a little misleading when you go by there. So there is room and it's perfectly flat up in this area here.
Okay. Okay, any other comments from the board? Is this something, Millie, you're comfortable going forward without advisement? Oh, Millie, I can't hear you. You're on mute. Oh, you're still on mute, Millie.
Is that better? Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I I guess this sort of existed before I came on, so I'm not quite sure some of the situations that are related to it. But based on kind of what Kathy is saying and that at wherever the common driveway is going, it's it's right now doing it as proposed with two single family houses and maybe make that as a condition.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Amy, any any concerns from you?
I mean, I could go either way. I could go with the special condition to with the condition added. But also, I understand that we've never met with town council to discuss litigation. And and we have nothing on our July meeting. Maybe that's something we should do. And since.
Oh, go ahead, Amy.
Oh, and since like, since these houses, we're not sure if they're going to be duplexes or single family, is it that big of a deal to bump this just in the next meeting till after, you know, Carrie gets to ask her questions to town council?
Well, I think we'd have to go to executive session anyway.
Yeah, can you do that on video?
The the reason why you haven't met with town council yet, you know, because I mean, I, you know, I I'm I'm speaking with town council at least once a week. But on this particular subject matter is that there isn't anything to discuss. Nothing has happened since the applicant filed the appeal. The only thing that is.
Carrie might have a couple of questions. Even if even if there isn't anything to discuss about the case, maybe members have questions about the case, because we've never been down this path before, the right or the wrong way to do things.
What, Michelle, do you have any thoughts either way? Oh, you're on mute, Michelle.
No, I'm okay.
Okay. Anthony, anything else to add?
So I think we're, I would, since we're like three weeks away from our next meeting, my preference would be to, you know, get feedback from town council. Make sure there's, if there's anything that we're not considering that we should know about. And then we could put this on the next agenda and and go from there. It's would be my preference.
Is that okay with the rest of the board?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Mike, it doesn't sound like you're breaking ground anytime soon if you're still thinking about what this will be.
Correct.
Does a, is that, I didn't hear. It's hard for me to say everybody at once. It looks like that was okay with the board to continue. So if this is something we would have to have an executive session to meet, which I guess we can do outside of this hearing to vote for. But what we need now is to just to vote to continue this.
Carrie, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is is there any issue? Let's let's presume that town council says everything's fine. You know, you you don't need to marry the two issues. Is there anything else you need from me from a technical standpoint that you're uncomfortable with, or is it just that legal issue?
I think just legally, I just want to make sure I can ask all the questions I want to ask without it or or just impact or any sort of.
I got it. I got it. No, I just, you know, for the next meeting, I'm just trying to figure out who needs to to be present at the meeting. And if it's just a legal issue, that isn't me.
Okay.
So Carrie, before you you vote to continue the hearing, can we just talk about what the questions are that that you want me to forward to town council?
Well, I think we need to go in executive session because I want to speak specific to the litigation, pending litigation.
I won't tell anybody. That's fine. I'll, you know, just let us know what you need us to do.
Okay, so do we need to vote to have an executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation, or do we do that? Should we do that outside of the hearing?
No, I I it doesn't really matter either way. I mean, it I I think that's I mean, is that's that's the sense of the board, is that you'd like to have an executive session at your July seventh meeting, but Michelle won't be there. And this is a special permit vote, so I'm going to assume that the applicant would probably want all five members present. So you might want to think about having an executive session as part of your July twenty-first agenda and maybe do the executive session first, possibly even, you know, at five thirty. And then your meeting would start at six and you would continue this hearing until, you know, July twenty-first.
Is that, does the board, does that accurately reflect the board's wishes?
Am I on mute?
Oh, go ahead. Yep.
My, oh, I'm not on mute. I was just wondering, because we have such a full plate on the twenty-first now. Like, do you think we should, we have nothing on the seventh, I don't think. Should we just do a quick one on the fourteenth? Like, would people rather have?
Yeah, we have to do our Zoom. We have to, we only have our Zoom.
Right, we only have one, we only have one Zoom license. And on the twenty-first, you just have two applicants. You have a continued hearing for Zero Bartlett, which you know, you're doing your site visit tomorrow on that.
Yep.
And then the soccer.
Okay, I just didn't know if it was piling up. I just keep hearing the twenty-first. Okay, I'm fine with that, the twenty-first.
Okay, so why don't we, is there a motion to continue the hearing for the common driveway, two twenty-two West Main Street Common Driveway Special Permit to July twenty-first at six P M?
I make a motion to continue the special hearing for two twenty-two West Main Street Common Driveway to July twenty-first at six P M.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, roll call. Michelle? Michelle?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. So we'll continue that. Thanks, Mike. In the meantime.
Thank you, Carrie. One one more thing. So just so I understand the process. So on the seventh, you're gonna get together just to determine what the questions are and then subsequent to that, you'll then talk to town council?
No, we're gonna, oh, shoot, because Mike's not gonna have enough time in between. So if we meet, if we have executive session on the twenty-first, right before the hearing, there's no in-between time for any response.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, so the twenty-first you're talking about, and those are just for the questions for town council?
Yes.
But but I think.
Then you're gonna talk to town council and then would be the subsequent meeting after the twenty-first in August?
Does it? Did I make that?
I mean, I I think you, you know, I a a couple of things. I I I'm going to have to give some indication to town council what you want him to come prepared for if you're gonna do an executive session on the twenty-first. So I so what what I'm hearing is that, you know, obvi- obviously, the questions center around, can you move forward with this common driveway application, given the pending litig- the the pending appeal?
Yes.
So, okay, so and then from there, you you know, his his response or his information to you, you know, might might be a enough that you can move forward on the twenty-first.
Okay.
And then if not, then I would suggest from the twenty-first, then continue it to your first August meeting.
Okay, so how about that, Mike? So that way you don't have to wait longer.
Well, the sooner the better.
Yeah. Okay, so and then that'll just at least give the option, so we don't have to miss it.
So we'll do executive session at five thirty?
Yes.
Okay.
And do we have to vote on that?
Uh, no, that's okay. That's, I'll just, I'll just move forward with, you know, telling when I first have to go through the town administrator, but, you know, that why why we want to have the executive session.
Okay, and then so we voted, we just made a motion that passed to continue to July twenty-first.
Okay, very good. Kathy, if you need anything from me, just let me know.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Good night.
Thank you.
Aye.
Are you guys, can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
All right. Okay, um, let's see. Next we have Continue Public Hearing for four twenty-five Whitney Street, Special Permit Site Plan Approval and Special Permit for Groundwater Protection Overlay District. I have a public hearing notice to read. I think I do. Yes. In accordance with section seven dash zero three dash zero five zero dot A two and seven dash zero seven dash zero one zero of the Northborough zoning bylaws and the Northborough Planning Board will hold a continued public hearing on June sixteenth, twenty twenty at six P M to consider the Special Permit Site Plan Approval Application and Special Permit for Groundwater Protection Overlay District of STERIS AST for the proposed construction of two additions to an existing industrial building located at four twenty-five Whitney Street, map fifteen, parcel eight. The additions will contain approximately twenty thousand one hundred square feet and approximately three thousand three hundred and seventy-five square feet respectively. Plans prepared by V H B are on file at the Town Clerk's Office and Town Planner's Office and may be viewed on the Planning Department webpage. Again, I read the order earlier suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and indicated how the public could participate via Zoom or via telephone. And there's a reminder, if you call via telephone, please press star nine to raise your hand. So I need to allow the right participants in and we have Steven Medeas. Oh, you know what? I'm not co-host anymore because I think I called back in. David, are you still on the line?
Yes, Sunday.
I am. Hold on, I'll make you co-host.
Or a few, for some reason that's, oh, there we go. Okay, so I'm gonna promote Steven and I think I have Rich here. Rich Whitehouse and I have Mike Corelli here and let's see. Mike, Mark Thomas, I see. And I don't see a Luke or a Jerry or David. Keith, I don't see. Did I miss someone? My Ken, I don't see. Okay, if you're on this this team and I didn't promote you to panelist, just raise your hand. Okay, it looks like we have everybody. Okay, great. So welcome, everybody. It's been a long time. Hi, Steven, I think, are you doing the presentation?
Uh, yes.
Okay, great. Great, so why don't get started?
Okay, thank you. So Steven Medeas to Michael O'Connell here on behalf of STERIS AST. Can you hear me okay?
We can, yeah.
Okay, thank you. First, I want to thank the board for meeting remotely in these troubling times, but we appreciate that you're keeping business moving forward. So with me, if you recall, you know, there was a meeting on March tenth that I didn't make and then the whole world unraveled, but at the meeting was our project team of Mike Corelli. He's here tonight. He's the plant manager for STERIS, Keith Burnett, Facilities Engineer, and Jerry Jorzinski, he's Director of Engineering and Facilities for STERIS AST. Also is Rich Whitehouse of V H B is with us virtually. So we submitted a second response memo to a series of questions, if the planning board will recall. It was a first set of questions in January and we responded to that in March. And our response in March included a transportation impact assessment from a traffic engineer, a copy of the Order of Conditions issued by the Conservation Commission, the Stormwater Management Report prepared by V H B, a photometric plan. Also, I should note that the Groundwater Advisory Committee issued a letter dated March tenth reporting that it unanimously voted to recommend approval with conditions of the Stormwater Management Special Permit. So our most recent memo was in response to approximately forty-four questions from the planning board, predominantly about the technology that would be used inside the building. I don't know if each member of the board had an opportunity to read my memo that was, is dated March twenty-seventh. I'm sorry, May twenty-seventh. It's in response to the March eleventh memo from the planning board. But with COVID, you know, I've been working remotely now for three months. But STERIS also, just so you're aware, you know, we had been representing to the board about But STERIS also, just so you're aware, you know, we had been representing to the board about the important work they do for the medical industry. They, they've been sterilizing the nasal swabs. There are two manufacturers of nasal swabs in the world. That facility in Maine, that you may have seen in the news recently, and one in Italy. But all those main products get sterilized in Northborough. So like the swabs for the state of Rhode Island were sterilized in Northborough. They're also ready to sterilize syringes for a vaccine, hopefully. And also they are currently sterilizing equipment for pharmaceuticals as they do testing and development of hopefully a vaccine. So they've been very busy on all of that. They can speak to those topics if you want to know what's, what's been keeping them busy in this crisis. But in my memo, I did mention to the planning board that there's a state law that governs the technology that will be installed and operated by STERIS at the site. And I provided, I don't know if town council has an opportunity, I know he's, he's no longer on the, attending the meeting, but you know, the notion of preemption, that when the Commonwealth through the general law occupies an area, and in this instance, they named the Department of Public Health as having the exclusive authority, that preempts the municipality from adopting or regulating that area that's occupied by the Commonwealth in that state office. But nonetheless, I wanted the board to be aware of that. And the STERIS team works hand in hand with Mass Department of Public Health and its Office of Radiation Safety. So knowing that, I thought a lot of the questions are areas that the Commonwealth covers. But nonetheless, we, you know, as we've been trying to be transparent throughout this whole lengthy process, we provided answers to each of the questions. So whatever the pleasure of the board is, if you wanted to go over those responses, we're available to do that.
Okay, so it looks like in that case where it was a matter of that type of regulation, it looks like you just indicated that here so that we could easily see which pieces were actually dependent on that type of regulation.
Well, I mean, you have your jurisdiction over site plan, right? So now we're inside the building talking about technology.
Oh, no, I'm just getting in to clarify, like how you've, I'm just looking at the response.
So I'm town council for, you know, a number of towns, so I'm rather familiar with what, when the Commonwealth preempts an area from local jurisdiction. So I, I've never seen one as clear as this statement, but in the general law, such rules and regulations shall apply exclusively throughout the Commonwealth.
Yeah, no, I'm just clarifying how you've mapped out this response. I'm just looking at the different responses.
Yeah, I, you know, it might be what, the planning board probably feels they're at a disadvantage when they try to figure this out. Well, there's a reason why. There's a state agency that does it, that has the expertise, probably the resources. So, but nonetheless, we did provide answers.
Thank you. Okay, so is there anything you wanted to point out from this response, specific? While you have the floor here, or is it just something you wanted us to look at? And I think in terms of, in terms of next steps, Kathy, this was sort of the final piece to, you know, get to the next phase, so do we just need to see if the board is, you know, this is where we are and this is, you know, wrap this up and let's move on to the next phase? Is that the next step?
Yes, that, that's where I believe that you're at, based on, you know, you're, even again, though it was a while ago, based on the last meeting in March, it was to get the responses to your questions. We, we went over the request for qualifications. You know, had the DPW director come in who, who does a lot of these requests for the town. And then, so everyone agreed to the language that was in the RFQ. So now it's just a matter of, you know, adding this memorandum to the material in the RFQ. And then the RFQ will be issued. And there's, there's, you know, a process that's outlined by the, by the state as far as how we issue an RFQ. And, and obviously it would then be placed on the town's website. I believe it's, I believe it's published in this, what's called the State Monitor, but I will double check on that with our DPW director. And then, you know, we set up the time for people to respond, and then from there you would do your interviews.
Okay. Does the board have any comments on the response? For questions? Does the staff have any comments on the response?
No, I don't.
This is a public hearing. Do any attendees have any comments on the response? Okay, it doesn't look like there's anyone in the public with any comments. So in terms of progressing this forward, what, is there a vote that is required? I have no further questions. In fact, thank you for putting this together. I realize these circumstances, none of us anticipated elongating it to this, you know, extreme. I think that we were obviously all put into a surprise environment that none of us expected. So I appreciate this, this level of response. Thank you.
Thank you. The whole STERIS team, you know, the answers about the facility in Switzerland and so a lot of different members of their company provided the answers.
Great, thank you, whoever is on the line as well who helped to contribute to this. Okay, so in terms of moving forward, is there a motion or a vote that you need to start the process, or are we prepared to just move forward?
I think just for clarification or to put it, you know, in the minutes, just a, you know, consensus from the board that, you know, you're moving forward with the, you know, we'll be issuing the RFQ and, and moving forward with the peer review process.
Okay, do you just need board consensus, or do you want a motion? Do you need a motion for the record?
You can do a motion.
Okay, so. Let me pull it back here. Okay, is there a motion to move forward with the RFQ, to incorporate this memorandum with our previous materials and move forward with the RFQ process for 425 Whitney Street?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Millie was the second. Okay, the motions were made in second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, I'm gonna do a roll call. Amy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Okay, so in terms of plotting out next steps, we start the RFQ process timeline-wise, what does that look like for, you know, how do we progress the hearing forward? Do we continue it to, what kind of timeline does that look like?
Well, if I could, Carrie, one suggestion that I would make. I know back at, I think it was probably at one of the February meetings, I had provided information from town council about the, given, there was a question from the board and from a resident about pending litigation. And, you know, is the board able to move forward with the site plan approval process? And the response, you know, was yes from the little bit more detail, but yes from town council. And at that time, I think one or two of the members was asking for additional details from town council, but then it sort of got, you know, just lost. And again, the, you know, pandemic came. So I'm thinking if you're to have an executive session for the other litigation on the 21st, if you want to also, just, you know, for transparency purposes here tonight, do you want to ask town council that, you know, for, for additional detail or verification on what he provided me back in February?
Sure, that, does anyone, does that sound reasonable to the board?
So you, so you could, again, essentially, you know, we'll, we'll have that executive session at 5:30 and you, you could, you could continue this to July? I'm just looking at the calendar here.
Well, so if, if it goes to RFQ now, is there, about how long does that take? So I, you know, do we check in?
I think it's, I think what we had talked about, and I, I have to, I don't have the RFQ in front of me. But I think that we gave it a three-week process, a three-week turnaround, if I'm not mistaken. But we had, we had talked about, again, the DPW director had recommended what the timeframe was. So I, so if I haven't incorrect, you know, I'll double check with him this week about that. But I believe it was about a three-week turnaround. So you could, you know, you could, I mean, it, given what, what else is happening this week and with other meetings, I won't have it out this week. I, I will look at having it out at the beginning of next week. So, so you may want to continue this. I'm just thinking out loud. I, I don't know if there's a benefit to continuing to your first meeting in August. There, there might be.
Okay, and if the goal of that meeting is to present who, to go through the options or to actually have a final pick, like is there anything we can do in the interim so that we're moving it forward?
There isn't anything that the board, once we issue it, you know, it's a matter of getting back the responses and then scheduling the interviews.
Okay.
Could I ask?
Yeah.
To the chair? Just a question to Kathy, you know, sometimes you can, if you know of a engineering firm or a company that might be interested, you can send it to them unsolicited, right?
Yes, yes.
I don't know if you had anyone in mind that might help the process, because this is gonna be a pretty comprehensive peer review. So maybe in your experience, there's someone you'd want to send it to, and that will prompt a response.
We, there, there's definitely companies that, that I have in the interim that I have just, you know, myself researched as far as on, on the internet, because again, as, as Steve you just said, it's, this isn't a typical engineer, you know, peer review, that we would send it out to the, you know, sort of the usual suspects, as, as people refer to them as. So there's, I think there's certainly specific companies. And I'll, you know, continue my, my, my research on that to get those companies, but we would also send it out, you know, just in, in general.
Okay, so does it sound most reasonable? Because I don't want to keep making everybody come back and then not have an answer. So would, would an August 4th timeline be a reasonable one where we can kind of anticipate we can go forward from there?
Yes, yeah, we, we should have, if, if, if this goes out the week of the 29th, we will definitely have responses back for August, prior to August 4th. I mean, they, they would probably be coming. And I think to be on the safe side, Carrie, we shouldn't go for the July meeting. We should go for August 4th. And then, and then I can just provide updates to the board as far as, you know, the number of responses that have been received, you know, when it went out, what's, what's the timeframe? Because again, I just want to verify whether it was three weeks or not.
Does August 1st, 4th sound okay for your team?
I think it's okay for me. I haven't heard from others yet, but, you know, we're looking forward to advancing it. So that, you know, I appreciate Kathy's effort there for as kind of quick a turnaround as we can get to get someone on board for peer review. So that's what it takes. I understand it's town meeting season suddenly, you know, so.
Unexpectedly.
Yes, so short answer, yes.
Okay, so why don't we plan on continuing to August 4th with the expectation that we'll have the RFQ piece ready to roll with a selection by then? Is there a motion to continue the hearing for 425 Whitney Street Special Permit Site Plan Approval and Special Permit for Groundwater Protection Overlay to August 4th at, should I, we'll continue to say 6:00 P.M.? Does that more seem to work for the board in these Zoom settings? Six, does that work as far as you can tell, Steven? Six would be okay? 6:00 P.M.?
I think I can make it back from the Cape by six. No, six is fine.
Is that your vacation week? That's terrible.
No, that's, sorry, yeah. First week of August, that always is, but it's been ruined before. That's all right. And actually, I could do this from the Cape, right?
I'm sure you don't mean that the, the planning board would ruin your vacation.
I'll bring, yeah. I'll bring my soup cup to the Cape and my laptop.
Okay, all right, so I want a motion to continue to August 4th at 6:00 P.M.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, I'll do a roll call. Amy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. So we will continue to August 4th.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck, good luck with your outdoor town meeting.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Challenges.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's see, so we are at the very tail end. Kathy, do you have additional business that would be pertinent to this evening?
I do not.
Okay, do we want to skip the minutes, or do we want to just get them in those last couple of minutes?
I know, I know, I just sent them out, oops, I forgot if I was on mute. The, I mean, I'm very excited that we had them in, in, in less than seven days. And, but I, you know, I know, but I did just send them out yesterday to you. So I don't know if anyone's had a chance to even look at them.
Did everyone get to read them yet or no?
I started, but I have not finished.
Okay. Why don't we, we're, and we need to end anyway at 9:30, so why don't, if the board's okay, why don't we continue the minutes until our next meeting? Oh, Michelle, you're not gonna be there, though. Is that okay?
Well, do you still want to meet on July 7th? I mean, we've, we've put everything off tonight from July 7th.
I think so, only because, wait, everything, we have nothing on July 7th?
Correct.
The only thing is we're just gonna, technically coming off of town elections. So I don't know if that's a good point to still meet. Why don't we keep it and then, where are we now? We have, we still have a couple of weeks. So maybe we keep it for now. Everyone's missed their deadline to, to be on the agenda?
Yes, correct. Yeah, you wouldn't have any public hearings or, or any, even just site plan approvals. There's, there's no time to get on that agenda.
All right, well, if anything comes up, or if we have minutes or anything coming at the ZBA or anything like that, we'll at least just have that held for now. Okay. Amy?
I just have a couple of questions. There is a ZBA meeting coming up. And do you think there are gonna be applicants that have site plans for the planning board to review? Kathy, I know you had sent me a couple, but it hadn't gone out yet.
The, the agenda for the July 1st ZBA meeting is the agenda that would have happened in March. The, the agenda hasn't been posted yet, but the, there were two applications on that agenda that the board had originally asked to have the applicants in. One of those applicants withdrew their application, which was 90 West Main Street. And the other applicant for, I think it's 82, but I'm not 100% positive, but I think it's 82 Coolidge Circle. They, they submitted a request, a variance request to allow the accessory dwelling unit that they were building to be larger. It exceeded the square footage that was in the zoning, but they wanted to move forward with the project. And so what they did with, working with Bob is they scaled back the size of their addition. And so they have moved, I'm not sure if they've started building yet or not, but I know they moved forward with the, the, the use with Bob. It's, I mean, they can do the use, it's an allowed use. So they technically are moving forward with their project, but they still do have their application before the Zoning Board of Appeals, which was for, I think it was 72, no. Bob, I forgot. Do you know how? Bob, I forgot. Do you know how many extra square feet they were? When there's like thirty extra square feet? It might have even been smaller than that.
If I remember right, it was like twenty, somewhere between twenty and forty extra square feet.
Yeah.
They exceeded the allowable size for an accessory dwelling unit. So they need a special permit for the, for the permission to do it. Plus they need a variance because they wanted to increase the size over what's prescribed in the zoning code.
So that, so they're, they're still, I believe they're still going forward. We re-advertised it for the, for the July first meeting.
They're going forward with the construction, but the current plans that they sent to me is simply an addition onto a house. And it does not have the appearance of a accessory dwelling unit. So as an addition, they can do that by right without going to any of the boards. But eventually, if they do want to turn it into an accessory dwelling unit, which I believe they do, they'd still have to go to the boards.
And then the, the only extra application that did come in was for, they have to get a special, the, the use is allowed by Wright, which is a granite countertop company that, you know, just a, you know, retail business that wants to move into office space at three twenty-nine West Main Street. And, and they, but they had to apply for a special permit because they're in a groundwater district, so.
Didn't they need a site plan too? I thought it said special permit with site plan.
Well, anytime someone applies for a special permit, a site plan gets attached to it. So that, that particular use, though, is they're just, they're moving into existing office space.
Now, what about, I have a quick question with that is, from what I read, I only have the heads up because I saw the groundwater. I saw it through groundwater. But it sounds like they're going to be bonding granite countertops together. That's not considered a manufacturing use. Like, I know there was a molding company where STERIS on four twenty-five, where it was wood and they were building moldings. So that was considered like manufacturing? I understand that a granite sale would be commercial, but when they're building countertops and they're using bonding and, and actually creating countertops, would that be considered manufacturing?
I'll, I'll defer to Bob or Fred who's reviewing that. I don't.
You can let the Z B A figure that out.
Okay, but it did have a site plan, so should it come in front of the planning board too?
Well, like I said, the, the way the zoning is written is anytime someone applies for a special permit, site plan approval gets attached by the Special Permit Granting Authority. In this particular case, they're moving into an existing building. They're not doing anything to the building. They're not putting an addition on. They're not planting a single flower. I, I mean, they're not, they're not doing anything. They're moving into an existing building.
So the granite's not going to be out front on the roadway. You know how some of the companies line the granite pieces up along the front?
I have, I have no idea, Amy. They, they haven't come to the Z B A yet. I mean, we'll, we'll know that July first.
Amy, I can speak to that a little bit. Having just got a granite countertop installed in my kitchen, I can tell you that they do that bonding in home, not in the shop. That way they don't have to transport it while it's bonded. So they, they cut the pieces to the right size and shape, then they bond them together when they get on site. As far as I can tell from speaking to the attorney, he has not mentioned anything about stockpiling any granite in front of that building. Matter of fact, they only have access to a small portion of the, of this, of the building that's in the front. Most of what they're leasing is space behind the building where they have a table and a big saw and a system that reclaims the water that they use to cut the granite. So they did not indicate any stockpile of material in front or even in back of the building.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other business? Okay, great. Is there a motion to close the meeting?
I make a motion to close the meeting.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Amy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Okay, thank you, everybody. Sorry to keep you a few extra minutes, David.